Good evening, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, how are you? Enjoying the sudden burst of summer upon us and finding my room rather warm tonight.
A little warm down there at City Hall tonight, huh Ben?
It is indeed.
I tried setting my fan up in my office and it works very nicely except for if I turn it high enough it's blowing my papers all over the place, so challenge third world, first world problems here. And I did it Susan, you made him lead City Hall. See, how are we doing here?
He's probably just getting a pop-up or something there.
Hey Kevin, it looks like John Barker and JP Harrys are sitting out in the attendees. You may need to promote them.
Maybe they'd rather be there.
Yes, I've requested John to rejoin as a panelist. I believe JP is just observing tonight.
Good to know. Thank you Kevin.
Thanks Kevin. Not sure why I'm not automatically made a panelist, so I'll get in touch with you tomorrow about that.
Yeah apologies about that John, we'll get that figured out.
I would get on that right away Kevin, there could be legal repercussions. Just about a minute to go, let's see how we're doing here. There we go, okay, we have all of our council members. Excellent.
Mayor, I still see that JP is sitting out in the attendees.
I think he was just watching tonight, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Okay.
I think that's the idea.
Ooh, spying on us.
That's correct, JP doesn't have any items, so he's just watching. He can't help himself.
I think we're gonna need him pay him more so we can get Netflix or something, do something more fun with this evening, but that's his choice, it's all good.
I guess maybe we're his tonight's entertainment, Mayor.
It has happened before, it may happen again, that's for sure, and with that perfect breisagin of where our meeting might go, I'd like to welcome everybody to this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. This is our regular meeting for Tuesday, March 22nd. And with that welcome, I'd like to next ask our city clerk if we could have a roll call please.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Mayor Landman.
And here, thank you. So next, I'd like to take just a second and ask our city manager, Damian O'Biggs, if he'd be good enough to introduce the staff to the public that are here tonight.
Yeah, good evening Mayor, members of the council. So myself, Damian O'Biggs, city manager. We also have, we were talking about earlier, John Booker, our city attorney. We have Michael Parrish, our chief of police. Noah House, our community development director. Autumn Butt is our associate planner here tonight, as well as Greg Scott, our public works director, and of course Kevin Patterson, our city clerk.
Well, good. Thank you for that. So with that, we're gonna move to item three, which is pledge of allegiance. So I'd like to ask the council and everybody who wishes to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so this brings us to item four, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving and reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or opted, adopted under this agenda. This is an action item, and I'll begin by asking first to the council if there's any corrections or additions you see for the minutes, and these are for our March 8th regular meeting of this year. I'm not seeing any hands up. Let's make sure I can see everybody. There we go, Ms. Sparks, they have you well hidden on my scroll tonight, so you might have to reach out and jog me from time to time. We'll make sure we don't miss anybody. Alright, I'm not seeing any hands, so with that, I'll ask next, since this is an action item, to see if we have any public comment on this item, please.
Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you very much for that. So this brings us to announcements, bear with me, I have a few announcements I'd like to read for everybody.
Mayor, we need to take action on that item.
That's right, seeing as this is an action item.
I would move to approve the minutes of marching.
I thank you for that motion, and did I hear a second from councilmember Ford? Alright, we have a motion, a second, if I could ask if we could have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. Alright, so now we actually will move to announcements. And the first one I'd like to read to you is a meeting orientation for new attendings or viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda, where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to, or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members may believe to be incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our city streets, parks, and public buildings. You can find details on the web at kattatcity.org. Related to that, citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle, and you can do this by downloading the Everbridge app from either the iOS store or the Android App Store, or simply by texting your zip code 94931 to 888777. And finally, like always, we do love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or at info@kattatcity.org. Now, if you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you do have an emergency, please do use 911. Continue to look for updates on our city website, as well as our social media channels, including Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. And that takes us to item six. So we do have a proclamation tonight for National Surveyors Week. And I'm gonna ask that, do we have anybody present to make any comments from National Surveyors?
Yeah, Mayor, we do. Mr. Bruce Johnson here is one of the panelists with us.
Excellent, hello Mr. Johnson.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
First of all, I like where you're at, it looks very comfortable.
It's actually a little cooler than it is here right now.
Yeah. What I'd like to do is read the proclamation first, and then I'll hand the mic virtually over to you. If you have any comments you'd like to make, we'd love to hear them. So give me just a second, yeah? So, this is a proclamation of the city council of Kattati declaring National Surveyors Week. And whereas, surveying has been an essential element in the development of the human environment since the beginning of recorded history, and is a requirement in the planning and execution of nearly every form of construction and its most familiar modern uses in the fields of transport, building and construction, communications, mapping, and the definition of legal boundaries for land ownership. And whereas, in order to accomplish their objectives, surveyors use elements of engineering, physics, mathematics, astronomy, law, and history. And whereas, since the colonial days of the United States, surveyors have been leaders in the community, statesmen, influential citizens, and shapers of cultural standards. Former notable surveys include George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, Lewis and Clark, Daniel Boone, and Henry David Thoreau, among many others. And whereas, many services are now provided through the use of sophisticated surveying equipment and techniques, including satellite borne remote sensing devices and automated positioning, measuring, recording, and plotting equipment. And whereas, the establishment of the week of March 20th through 26th, 2022, as National Surveyors Week is a fitting tribute to all surveyors. So now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of Kattati proclaims this week of March 20th through March 26th, 2022, as National Surveyors Week in the city of Kattati. I always enjoy this proclamation because it's absolutely fascinating, and I'm sure you have more to inform us, Mr. Johnson, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. On behalf of the Sonoma County chapter of the California Land Surveyors Association, I'd like to thank you for this recognition, and say a few words about surveying. Quite often, when most people think of surveyors, they see, they think of somebody wearing a bright orange vest in the middle of the street looking through what looks like nothing more than a oversized camera. And while that is often true, we also use, as you said, a lot of other sophisticated equipment to determine location from houses to property boundary lines, to the actual center lines of the roads. And what we do is critical to the improvement and maintenance of everything in infrastructure that you see, from bridge overpasses, sewer lines, water lines. We do it all. We work with engineers, and to locate where the existing conditions are, as well as to plan out what's going to go there. We make determinations of where boundary lines are, and sometimes we even find that they're where they're supposed to be, as opposed to an inch or so different. But by and large, there's, surveying is involved with almost every piece of the construction industry, and civil engineering, and we do a lot more than just stand out in the street and look through a camera. So, when what we do will last generations. So, again, on behalf of the chapter, I'd like to say thank you for this recognition, and we look forward to surveying more in the future.
Well, excellent. I thank you, I appreciate the certainty that your profession brings us, it's certainly needed, and I can only imagine some of the unique challenges that you faced in your career. It would be an interesting tale to tell sometime, perhaps at a future, a future meeting. But for now, I'll see if any of my colleagues have any comments tonight? And if not, since we did have a little discussion, a little back and forth, I'll just open up to the public in case anybody would like to comment or ask a question of Mr. Johnson. So, I'll ask to see if we have anybody who would like to speak.
Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or dial star nine if you're dialing in. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Very good, well, thank you for that, and thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I apologize, but I do need to beg out, I have another meeting I need to go attend.
That's the world we live in now, good luck.
Thank you. So, thank you very much for your time, Mr. Mayor, city council members, we do appreciate it.
You're more than welcome. Well, that completes then item six. So this brings us to item seven, which is approval of the final agenda. This indeed too is an action item. So I'll begin by asking the city manager if there's any changes to the agenda tonight?
You, Mayor, no proposed changes. I do have a small correction on consent calendar when we get there, but no other changes.
Excellent, we'll make sure we note that, thank you. Alright, with that, since this is listed as an action item, I will just ask our clerk if we could check real quickly and see if anybody wishes to speak on anything regarding the agenda tonight, the final agenda action?
If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you. Alright, so this now brings us to item eight. This is citizen's business and public comment for consent calendar items. And I do need to read a little legalese first. Any member of the public wishing to speak in the council on any item listed on the consent calendar, or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda, that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action in any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to city council policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. And the mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So I'll ask our clerk to see if we have any citizen business or consent comments tonight.
Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or dial star nine. Neil Hancock? Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Okay, I think I got the unmute button there. Yes, good evening, council. I'd just like to address the West Side Street projects and ask the question, when will school kids be able to walk to school? There has been the concept for some time of a walking bus, and recently I was inspired to find a poem about walking. So this is from Thomas More, "Soulmates." Walking inspires and promotes conversation that is grounded in the body, and so it gives the soul a place where it can thrive. I think I could write an interesting memoir of significant walks I've taken with others in which intimacy was not only experienced, but set fondly into the landscape of memory. When I was a child, I used to walk with my uncle Tom on his farm. Across fields, up and down hills, we talked of many things, some informative and some completely outrageous, and quite a few very tall stories emerged on those bupolic walks. So my plea is that we can actually enable the kids to be able to experience the outdoors. We talk so much of being able to, of a climate emergency, but how do we get people so that they can do, they start with active transportation? So anyway, thank you very much, Neil Hancock.
Certainly.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Then before we move on, I believe the question is when speaking about the West Side Road project, which is in full sway, because I've been hearing it all day long here. So I'm well aware of that. I'll ask our city manager just to give us an update of when that might be at a position where it's less problematic for people to walk to school. I know that's pretty soon.
Well, with regard to the pavement, yeah, so that, I think we're looking at probably next week to be paved. So, yeah, probably, I mean, not, probably not this week. Maybe by the end of next week. So we're looking at that timeframe to get the roads repaved. And that project did add, as you know, a walking path over West School Street from West Tiara to the school street tunnel. So that added another walking segment in there. So with regard to the longer term planning for the pathway to the school, the only missing piece is along West School between Clifford and Maple. And I don't have a specific date on that at this point.
So at the point when that final piece is completed, we actually will have a dedicated walking path through this relatively rural neighborhood to serve anybody coming from any point in town who wishes to be able to walk to school. So look forward to that. Any comments from council before we move on? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Scan back this way. All right.
Mayor, I would move to approve the consent calendar.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
So we do have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. I did want to ask first, though, before we do that, if any councillor would like to pull any of these items.
And Mayor, add one small correction on one of them before we adopt the consent calendar.
And I do see a hand from Councilmember Sparks. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I don't necessarily want to pull something. I just had a clarification question about Item C.
Why don't you go ahead and ask that, and then we'll let Mr. Reddick answer that for you, and then he can give us the update to One Piece Two.
That sounds great. So just the question was, which exact intersections are the traffic lights going to? Because I saw that the William and George Street with Old Redwood Highway was delayed. So I just wanted to make sure I knew exactly which intersections it was.
Yeah, so the Traffic Flow Improvement Project upgrades the signal controllers. So it doesn't actually, I mean, it doesn't add any signals, but it upgrades the signal controllers at Comer from Old Red, 116 and Old Redwood Highway, and East Kattati and Old Redwood Highway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Well, and one more thing, just, it does re, because this will be probably one of the more noticeable changes to people, is it will also reorient the turn lanes from Old Redwood Highway onto 116. So you don't get dumped into the southbound US 101 dedicated line. So that is, that will be a change at that intersection. That will be probably the most noticeable thing that people will see. In addition to some of the signage and frightening.
Good to note. I think for years we've seen people desperately trying to merge back very quickly in a short space. So I'm hoping for most people, they'll find this a good improvement. All right. So we've had a motion, a second, we have questions, answers, and we have our updates at that. So with that, I'll ask if we can have a roll call vote on the consent calendar, please.
Sorry, Mayor, sorry, before you do that, one last little correction I didn't get to. So on Item Nine B, under the staff report recommendation, it talks about an amount of 23,000, but it's actually 32,901 and 75 cents, and it's correct in the resolution. It's just in the staff report, it had the wrong number in it.
Yeah, for catching that. All right. I'm assuming our move in a sector will accept that update. With that, I'll ask if we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. All right. Well, thank you. So that brings us to Item Ten, which is Direction on Future Agenda Items. And I'll ask the council if anybody has any future agenda items they want to propose to them. I'm not seeing any hands. All right. Thank you, council. That concludes Direction on Future Agenda Items. This brings us to Item Eleven, which is Public Hearings. This is, of course, an action item. And we're going to be moving to our only public hearing, Item A, which is a ordinance of the council of the City of Kattati adopting amendments to Title 17 Land Use of the Kattati Municipal Code to support urban agriculture. And I'll ask if we can begin with our staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman and members of the council. Good evening. My name is Autumn Bass, and I am a new face to you. I am the new associate planner in the Community Development Department, and I'm very happy to be here. We have before us tonight and a proposed ordinance related to the promotion of urban agriculture includes amendments to the zoning code. Next slide, please. We're looking at changes to several sections of the code and looking at several different aspects of urban agriculture, including commercial crop production, produce stands, chicken keeping, and community gardens. This item also includes rezoning of the Veranda Faletti Ranch property to facilitate its use as a demonstration farm. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go over the highlights here. As you saw from the staff report, there's a lot of information here. Everything is in the staff report. I'm going to hit the high points, and we'll have questions afterward, of course. Some background. So as you most likely know, the general plan actually has quite a list of goals that relate to the promotion of local food production and healthy food access. I want to call out a couple of the most salient ones here. One is supporting development of appropriate agriculture in residential and open space zones. The other is strengthening local food systems, including community gardens and community-supported agriculture. In our review of the zoning code, we discovered a number of restrictions on urban agriculture that present some real challenges to implementation of these general plan goals. And so it happened that in fall of last year, the city council directed the staff to take a look at this and and bring an item with potential amendments for the council's consideration to bring the code to consistency with the general plan. Next slide, please. So there are several areas of proposed change. One of, one of them is crop production, which is essentially commercial crop production. It's urban farming. What is proposed by this ordinance is to allow by right crop production in four different zones. The lowest density zones in the city, rural residential, residential very low density, open space recreation, and open space conservation. Currently, crop production is allowed in the city. It is allowed only in the RR district and requires a use permit. So this change would apply the crop production land use to a little bit bigger area, bringing in the RVL and open space districts, but still applying just to the lowest density districts in the community. Next slide, please. And I want to take a look at the zoning map here, so you can see which properties we're primarily talking about. The open space areas are a really small fraction of our land area. So really, we're talking about the RR and RVL zones. And so you can see here on the map, the RR is that mint green. The RVL is that tan color, kind of looking at the south and the west areas of the city. And this is where we find the lower density parts of our community primarily and larger lot sizes. Even so, a lot of these properties are really small for any kind of significant agricultural operation. Only a handful of them are actually more than two acres in size. And of those, there are just a few that are five to 10 acres. And actually, those larger parcels are all located in RVL where crop production is not actually allowed currently. So the bottom line is we're talking about very small scale agriculture. Okay, next slide. So recognizing that urban farming will, you know, brings with it some, you know, some concerns, we've included operation standards related to urban agriculture and in this item. And it includes the hours of operation. And I know that the hours of operation are of lively interest. So I have a whole slide later on devoted to sort of comparison of the hours of operation for the different uses. So I'll come back to that. We include setbacks for the crop production use, so the crops need to stay back from the edges of the property. And our zoning code already addresses a number of issues that could be of concern to neighbors, including dust, vibration, light and glare, liquid waste, noise and odor. Those are all currently addressed in the code. Another thing I want to call out here is the inclusion of community-supported agriculture, also known as CSA. You may be familiar with that, but just briefly, CSA is really sort of held up as, you know, a great standard for small farms as a way to have income that they can count on. Essentially, people buy memberships and they come get their box of vegetables or get a delivery of vegetables on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. And it's money that farmers can count on. So it's a key part of financial stability for an urban agriculture operation. Okay, next slide. So moving on to our second area of changes, produce stands. So what is proposed in the draft ordinance is produce stands being allowed with a minor use permit in our four lowest density zones. As things stand right now, produce stands are allowed in the city in the RR zone with a use permit. And the use permit costs around $4,000 is kind of the the cost of one of those. So by bringing in a minor use permit, we're still allowing a certain amount of oversight by the city, making sure that impacts can be reduced. But the cost of that goes down to about $2,000 for a minor use permit. A produce stand would need to be accessory to an agricultural operation. So you would need to be farming on your property to actually sell your produce on your property. It wouldn't be produce that was brought in from outside of the community, although it could come from a neighboring, immediately neighboring farm. If you happen to have two farms next to each other, they could share a produce stand. The produce stands can be like a table with an umbrella. They're limited in size anyway to 400 square feet. But it can be something very minor, like the table and the umbrella. There are parking requirements for produce stands already on our books. We're making a slight shift in how many spaces, how many spaces per square feet from 150 to 200 square feet. But the basic requirement is three spaces regardless of the size of the produce stand. And the parking area needs to be a minimum of 20 feet setback from the front of the property or the roadway. So again, the produce stands are intended to increase the financial viability of these little farm operations. Okay, next slide. Okay, moving on to chickens. So chicken keeping is proposed to be allowed as a commercial use. Currently, in Kattati, commercial chicken keeping is not allowed. Folks are allowed to have up to 20 chickens on their property regardless of the size of their property. And that's primarily in the residential zones. So this change would, in addition to allowing commercial use, would increase the limit of the number of hens, up to 12 per acre or a total of 20. Okay, so if the property is two acres, they're still going to be stuck with their 20 chickens. Only on larger properties could there actually be more. We're not going to, we're not proposing to allow roosters in the RVL zone. They are allowed in RR right now. We're proposing to add them into the OSR zone in addition, in order to allow roosters at the Faletti Ranch property, which we'll get into in a minute. Produce stands that are there on site are where folks might be able to sell their eggs on site. They can also sell them off-site in other locations. So again, we're looking at increased financial viability by adding in the egg sales as an opportunity. Okay, next slide. Okay, so community gardens. What this ordinance is proposing is to allow community gardens by right in all of the zoning districts in the city. Currently, community gardens are allowed in residential districts and the OSC district. They require a minor use permit. Again, that's a cost to each garden of about $2,000. We are considering, or we're asking the council to consider amending the definition of a community garden to also include nonprofit educational and institution-sponsored gardens, because many times that's what a community garden can be, rather than just a collection of individuals and kind of allows the charitable activity that a community garden can bring to the community by allowing those types of gardens as well. We're also proposing that onsite produce stands and/or CSA would be allowed to the community gardens in order to increase their sustainability. Community gardens are notoriously low on resources and having some opportunity for a small income can help keep those farms sustainable or increase their charitable activities, if that's what they do. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. So this slide is showing the hours of operation that are proposed by the ordinance. And we're starting with just displaying the construction hours standard to begin with. That's an existing standard in the city, and everything that is proposed below is really tearing off of that construction noise standard. So you'll see that with crop production, the proposal is that any kind of machinery use, mechanical equipment use, that that would be that seven to seven weekdays, nine to five weekends, in keeping with the construction hours limitations. Slightly expanded hours on the weekends for business-related traffic. And that would really be either employees coming to the site, such as there are, or any kind of visitors coming for commercial purposes, such as the CSA or the produce stand. That longer hours on the weekends allows a little bit more time for for visitors to come to the site to actually conduct purchase of vegetables. The vehicle loading and departure time slot is really oriented towards getting the farmers to the farmer's market. Farmers, as I understand it, typically need to get up early, early, load up their van, and drive out to the farmer's market, wherever that may be. And this is recognizing that that may happen and allowing them to to take their product to market. With the produce stand use, you'll see that the hours limitations are the same as the business traffic for crop production use. And with community gardens, the machinery and mechanical equipment hours limitations would be the same as for crop production and as well as for construction. And the produce stand and CSA at a community garden is tailored a little bit too to reflect the fact that those folks maybe not be paid to be there, and so they may be coming. And so they may be coming a little bit later in the morning, and I'd stay a little bit later. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this item also includes the rezoning of Veranda Filetti Ranch. Currently, Filetti Ranch is zoned neighborhood low density, which is a residential zoning district, which proposed to change the zoning to O S R, open space recreation, with the goal of allowing the farm that's on the site to continue to operate and to develop more as an educational center and community resource. The zoning on the site, the N L, does not currently allow farming, farm animals, or commercial chicken keeping. Okay, next slide, please. There's also a conservation easement on the site, which is held by the Sonoma County Ag and Open Space District, which restricts the uses on the site. Basically doesn't allow residential beyond the caretaker building that is on the site. Also included throughout this item or the other changes proposed for this item, to changes to the zoning code would allow Filetti Ranch to pursue some activities that would allow for financial sustainability over the long term so that as a community facility, it could continue to operate. Those include the uses we've been talking about, crop production, commercial egg sales, produce stand, C S A, but also includes a commercial nursery, plant nursery, artisan and craft product manufacturing, community events, tours, and onsite daycare, all of which are not actually allowed under the current configuration with its zoning. Okay, next slide. So those are the changes that are proposed. I want to just go over the various, some of the considerations that, you know, went into the thinking related to this proposed ordinance. Most of the communities, our nearby neighbors and Sonoma County itself, already allow by right crop production on a commercial basis on their lowest density residential district. So these changes really put Katati on a par with our neighbors. In some cases, going a little bit further, that would include allowing produce stands with a minor use permit, allowing the community-supported agriculture, commercial egg production, and allowing community gardens in all zones. Okay, next slide. The city has been in discussions with several different urban agriculture organizations and a number of local residents who have requested changes to the zoning code to allow more urban agriculture. And that some of those changes have included this commercial crop production in R V L by right, commercial chicken keeping in some zones, and more hens on larger properties, produce stands in R V L, and C S A as an accessory to crop production, and increasing the greenhouse size in the R V L zone. And all of those changes have made it, those requested changes have made it into this draft ordinance. Next slide. Some additional changes that have been requested include commercial crop production in all zones, chicken keeping, and produce stands by right in all zoning districts, and a significant increase in the number of hens. And those are all changes that have actually occurred to great success in a number of communities throughout the country. The staff proposal, however, is continuing to limit that crop, the expansion of crop production, produce stands, and egg production to the lowest density zoning districts and keeping that use permit at a minor use permit level for produce stands. Next slide. Okay, I want to go over just a few other issues that have come up. The planning commission has recommended this ordinance to the council. There was some discussion about potential impacts, however. Potential noise from community gardens and the hours of their activity, potential traffic and other impacts for produce stands. A desired expansion of the crop production and produce stands to the neighborhood low density and the neighborhood medium density, so going a little bit further. And then finally, ensuring that there's inclusion of an equity focus in the program offerings at Filetti Ranch. Another issue that has come to our attention is the issue of the use of pesticides or spraying of pesticides at farms. And unfortunately, as things stand right now, per state and federal law, local jurisdictions cannot regulate the use of pesticides on private property. Any commercial agriculture operator needs to register with the county ag commissioner's office if they want to use pesticides. And any purchase and use of pesticides is reported to the ag commissioner's office. One of the things that we can do is set the setbacks, which we are proposing for the crop production. So if there are setbacks to ensure that spraying, should a farmer actually decide to do that, would not be happening outside of those setback areas. And as it is now, a private homeowner would actually be allowed to spray, maybe using Roundup or something, all the way up to their property lines with a crop production land use, that would not be allowed. Okay, next slide. Okay, I'm sure there will be questions and comments, but I'm going to go right to our recommendation so we can get to it. The community development department recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing and consider the ordinance to amend the land use code to facilitate urban agriculture and local food production consistent with general plan goals. And with that, I'm ready for your questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So we do have a public hearing ahead of us and many people we can speak. So what I'd like to recommend tonight, council, is we have one round of whatever questions we have to ask first, and then we go to the public hearing. And with that, I'd be happy to see whoever would like to speak first. I see Councilmember Harvey, I see your hand, and I see Councilmember Ford. In that order. Please go ahead, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Uh, thank you. And I will save my comments for later, but I do have some number of questions based upon the ordinance that is before us. I would like to know how we changed from urban agriculture to commercial agriculture. In the beginning, this was discussed as urban agriculture. And then everywhere in the ordinance, now we're talking about commercial operations, which in my mind is very different than the definitions that I've seen for urban agriculture. Two, how did the heavy equipment get added to this ordinance? I did, I've done a lot of checking on this and a lot of research. And some folks, in fact, in some of the comments cited Sacramento ordinances. And when I looked at their ordinance, they specifically prohibit heavy mechanized equipment in residential districts, except for the possibility of an initial preparation of the land. So I'd like to know how heavy equipment got in there because there seems to be a lot of concern with that. Three, the setbacks for crop production. But there are no setbacks for the equipment, the heavy equipment use, no setbacks for the business-related traffic and the loading and departure of traffic, which means those things can happen right on people's property lines and disrupt people. Four, there is a kind of definition of a community garden, but it is extremely vague. And based upon that definition that's on page 135, it would appear that anybody could call anything a community garden. Since there is no set standard for what's a community garden, I could say that my garden was a community garden. And there's nothing to say that it's not. And by changing this to allow in all of the areas, in fact, you are negating the other parts of the ordinance because anybody could say that, oh, well, all I have is a community garden. So I think that that needs to be addressed. Five, should we be placing the name of the contractor in our ordinance? On page 109, we referenced the name of the contractor. And I'm not sure that we really should be putting their name because over time, in an ordinance, that contractor could change. Six, on page 110, item 2A, it says R L V, and I think the intention was R V L. Seven, can you, just for the public's own learning and to kind of reinforce for us, if you could explain the difference between a use permit and a M U P? Because there is concern that with the M U P, that there is no public input. Therefore, people will not be notified. They will not be able to say what the impacts are. It's strictly basically by right or up to someone on staff. So I think that that needs to be clarified. On page 131, it talks about community garden. But if there's no one responsible for a community garden, who will be held accountable for the item that's mentioned in there that on 174262, it says, "At no time shall garden activity create nuisances with regard to vectors, odors, dust, and noise." If there's no one responsible, how will that be enforced? And on page 132, I really would like to know who determined that these times, in these hours of activity, ensure the compatibility between those activities and nearby residences, based upon comments that I have heard and others have said that those are in conflict with nearby residential uses. So I'd like to know how we landed on those times and why we think that construction, which is a limited-time activity, is equal to a farming operation that is in perpetuity. So those are my questions, Mayor. Sorry about that.
That's fine. Why don't, Ms. Buss, would you like to try and respond to those? And if you need to have any of them repeated, please do ask the Vice Mayor.
Okay. So your first question, Councilmember Harvey, was how do we go from urban agriculture to commercial urban farming? Yes?
Yes.
My understanding, and you know, you'll forgive me, I started working for the city in January. Some of the back history was before my time. The urban, our charge was to look at the promotion of urban agriculture in the community and see if there are ways that the zoning code could be adjusted to meet the goals within the general plan, which promotes urban agriculture. My understanding is that the term agriculture could be commercial or non-commercial. The urban agriculture doesn't necessarily refer just to gardening, home gardening, conceivably to promote more food production and increase access to healthy food within the community. There would need to be a mechanism to get that food grown in the community to other members of the community. That could occur through donation or sale. So the consideration that urban agriculture might become a going concern in Katati, get some traction, to me, was predicated on the idea that it would be a commercial use. The inclusion of community gardens is not intended to be a commercial use for profit.
Yeah, this is no, I just like to add. So right now, the distinction is everyone's allowed to have as much agricultural activities on their property as they want in all residential districts, as long as they're not doing it for a profit. That's the current regulation. And so the intent, and I understand the confusion, we reference commercial because as a land use activity, agriculture is a commercial enterprise. So if you're looking at it from a land use perspective, which is how our department views things, then if you want to have the land use of agriculture, you need to be able to do it in a commercial way to make a profit and support it as a business. And so that's why we made the distinction in the ordinance language from urban agriculture being commercial. Because currently, as a hobby, all of us could have any farm we want, any size. But as soon as you flip the switch to making a profit from it, it becomes a commercial activity under the code. That's what that reference is. So from our standpoint, we saw the direction to support urban agricultural activities as flipping that switch to becoming commercial. So folks who have these small properties could make a profit.
Can I ask you a follow-up question to that, Ben? So in the commercial areas, we are very specific in our code in what areas within the city, what types of commercial activities can happen. And basically, what you're saying, because this is commercial agriculture, we are not holding them to as specific a area as we do for other commercial activities.
I wouldn't say that because currently, anyone in these zones is allowed to do animal production and have farm animals on their property. That's a by right use in many of these districts. However, it's crop production specifically that's excluded from our code. So the big change is really to allow crops, so farming activities. That's really the big change. And it is limited to the larger residential less.
Okay. Okay. So can we move on to the next question? I know I cut out a little bit there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I didn't know if it was me or him.
He's out of state. So the connection is far.
Yeah, yeah.
Your next question related to the heavy equipment. So not all farms use heavy equipment. You know, the proposed changes are in recognition that heavy equipment is used by some farms and that we wanted to limit their, the hours in which they were allowed to do that. The, and actually, I think you had asked later about the setbacks related to crop production and the, those uses, the mechanical equipment.
Right, there's setbacks for the crop production, but not for any of the other uses.
They would be, those are part of the use. Those are part of the crop production use. And so that use of equipment, you know, any, you know, any loading and unloading, that would be subject to the setbacks as well. It's the entire, those are setbacks for the entire use. So the idea is, though, to limit that use of mechanized equipment, to limit the impacts. I think it's unusual to have a farmer that doesn't use some mechanized equipment sometimes.
Right. And in some, in some city ordinances, they talk about more, you know, things like lawn mowers and weed whackers and, you know, things that are of a nature that are a little bit different than heavy-duty tractors and things like that, that spew a lot of dust and diesel fuel and things like that. And that's kind of the distinction in some of the other cities' ordinances.
Okay. So you had asked about the setbacks.
Right, and it does not, it only says for crop production. So that, in my mind, says that the other ancillary things, like the equipment and the parking and the farm stand and the getting your deliveries and all that, could be right against the property line and impact your neighbors. And because it's not called out, then it's allowed.
As long, those uses would be accessory to the crop production land use. And so those setbacks are applied to those ancillary uses.
And I would just add, with the exception of the farm stand, which requires a minor use permit, which allows the city to review and put additional limitations on its operation.
Okay.
Yeah, and your next, so your next question related to the definition of community garden. And. Well, what we have on the books right now is pretty vague as well. We are trying to prove on it.
And I can jump in. So the, the concern, Councilmember Harvey, seems to be that because it's so general, it would allow someone to, who's doing a commercial farm, to say, "Oh, I'm actually a community garden."
It does.
But I would just say, the distinction is, as soon as you go commercial, you're not a community garden anymore, because it's explicitly not commercial. And if the definition needs to be tightened up a bit to make that more clear from your perspective, we're happy to make that change.
I would say that it would, because it basically says that any charitable or nonprofit can benefit from them. So, you know, that gets a little bit gray there again. It, it implies that it would be okay. And you talk about community gardens being able to set up, being able to set up a stand. Well, then, if they set up a stand, then aren't they commercial? If they're selling their things, rather than just exchanging them? So it, it, it gets gray.
You mentioned, referencing the name of the contractor in the ordinance.
On page 109, it references Farmster and Farm, you know, we, we, we just don't know that forever it will be them. It just seemed like an odd thing to put a contractor's name in there.
You're absolutely right. That's actually part of the staff report. We, we would not want Farmster's name in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're absolutely right about that. All right. So the difference between the minor use permit and the use permit, I'm going to let Director House, Houseman, go into that.
Yeah, and I appreciate the question, because it is confusing. But I would just say, from, the, the process is the exact same. We notify neighbors, it's done at a public hearing, the decision is appealable. The main difference is, the decision is made by the director per the code, and is appealed to the, to the Planning Commission if appealed, where a full use permit is made by the Planning Commission, appealed to the City Council, except if the director identifies that there's a need to elevate the decision to the Planning Commission. So, in a case where we held a public hearing, and there is a lot of concern or a lot of input, and maybe a lot of issues to parse, myself, definitely, and, and most folks I've known who are, are directors, or make, or zoning administrators is another kind of level of decision for minor use permits in other jurisdictions, they would elevate that to the Planning Commission for the decision. The main benefit there is to try to not have such an onerous cost for these small folks who are just starting out, in theory, or they just have a limited size of their farm. So the process is the same, the neighbors still get input, it's a planning director-level decision, appealable to the city, to the Planning Commission, or elevated to the Planning Commission for minor use permits.
Yeah, I just would, I want to ensure that there is an opportunity for public input, that it's not just, you know, staff signs off and says, "Oh yeah, this looks great."
Yeah, no, it's...
And the neighbors don't know about it, and, you know, it just pops up.
No, it's a full public hearing with all the notification, similar to a Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, Councilmember Harvey, you had another question that was relating to the community garden, about who is the responsible party within a community garden?
Yeah, if there's no use permit, if there's no filing, if there's no minimal use permit, and anybody can just do it, yet you reference that "at no time shall a garden activity create a nuisance with regard to vectors, odors, dust, and noise." If there's no one managing it or owning up to it, how, how is that enforced?
So it's a, it's a property owner responsibility. So ultimately, any violations of the city ordinances fall on the property owner. And so when we were envisioning this, we thought someone with a commercial property that has a, a big outdoor area may choose to allow a commercial garden, or I mean, I'm sorry, a community garden for their employees, or maybe the neighboring property owners, or the church may want to do that. And so we thought it would be beneficial to broaden out the allowances. Autumn, I'll let you add to that.
Yeah, and so, you know, typically, I've worked with a lot of community gardens over the years, and, you know, typically, they do have some sort of a governing body, they'll have like a board or what have you. And in particular, you know, that's why we called out these institutional or educational gardens, because, you know, those have a responsible party, you know? So, right now, we are allowed to have, you know, these other types of community gardens. We're just expanding the definition out a little bit.
Well, I, I, what I hear Noah saying is, ultimately, it's the owner of the property that we would go after.
Right, yeah, it would become a code enforcement situation.
Not a good situation, but that's fine.
Okay, and then finally, you were wondering about the hours.
Yeah, because you talk about that they were put in place based upon construction hours. Well, a construction process is a limited-time process. It's, you know, three months, six months, it goes away, and you get your life back. This is in perpetuity, and I'm not, I don't necessarily think that this ensures compatibility between farm, these farming activities and the nearby, however, you know, if farm equipment's happening, or spraying, or, you know, whatever's happening, those nearby residences may not be able to use their residence. And, and it will be forever, it's not this short period of time. So I guess what I'm objecting to is the wording that it says that ensures compatibility, because I don't believe it does.
Okay, and so the question is, the, how do we come to those hours?
You put those hours in, and you said you knows those specific hours of activity, because that will ensure that, that compatibility, and I don't know that I, you know, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so we really wanted to give the council kind of a, a starting point, you know, sort of an opportunity to, you know, something to look at and provide feedback on. And, you know, we're looking at, with this ordinance, it's really a balance here, right, between if we want to have urban agriculture, what makes it viable?
But you also have to be a good neighbor.
Right, exactly.
And not everyone is.
Right, so unlimited hours would make it a very bad neighbor, potentially. So, you know, so this is, so we can, the hours are, you know, adjustable. It's very good to be getting this, you know, this feedback, so that we can look at that. You know, what we do know about farmers is that they, they like to do their activities in the cool of the morning, in the cool of the evening. You know, one of the, the folks who has been communicating with us, with the California Alliance for Family Farmers, pointed out that a lot of the farmers in the United States actually work a primary job that's not agriculture. And, you know, that's the reality, in order to keep a farm going, they need another job. And so they're, they're working at their farms when they're not at their other jobs. So, that doesn't mean that these hours are what makes sense for Katari, but for, it's kind of, it reflects, I think, a somewhat sad reality about agriculture, you know, in the country, that it can't be somebody's primary profession.
Yeah, and I think you get the gist of what I'm saying, is I don't want to set up a situation where we're pitting neighbors against neighbors, and the only option is, you know, well, there is no option. If it's, if it's by right, they're just kind of stuck. I don't want to create, you know, a situation where neighbors are, you know, don't like what their neighbors are doing, and likewise, staff or the police are being inundated with calls because something's happening. So, that's my concern. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, next, we're going to go to Councilmember Ford, followed by Councilmember Sparks, and then Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. So, during this previous question and answer back and forth, I kept coming up with more things I wanted to say, but I'll save those till after public comments. And my, my only question is about, you mentioned other local jurisdictions with similar ordinances, and I'm wondering if you can just briefly run down which other local cities have similar kinds of urban ag ordinances or requirements?
Yeah. Go through my sheet of papers here.
Right, sorry.
It's okay. So, you know, we looked at all of the neighboring cities, and see if I have, actually had a nice little sheet that I made up. So we looked at Sebastopol, Petaluma, Santa Rosa, I mean, all of the communities here, Windsor, Cloverdale, and the county itself. And really, what I found is that, if anything, Katari was a little bit on the more restrictive side at this point, and that if you look at, just for instance, Sebastopol, urban agriculture is allowed, commercial agriculture is allowed in their R1 and R2 zones, that is by right.
Does that refer to one-acre and two-acre minimums for them?
Yeah, it's a one acre in, in the R1, two and a half acres in the R2. You know, and it kind of goes on like that. Windsor, for instance, permitted by right in their estate residential zone, which is three dwelling units to the acre, minimum lot size of 10,000. You know, and I think that was, you know, even Heelsburg, yeah, Heelsburg allows crop production in their R1 zone and commercial poultry. So pretty much, I think, even Roanoke Park. So, you know, it's pretty much the standard, you know, sort of like looking at the different zones, you know, different lot sizes, but it's all pretty much around that. You know, the R1, R2 estate residential, the lowest density residential areas. And the county's a little bit different, because they have agricultural zone.
Yeah, sure.
They also allow crop production by right in their two lowest-density residential zones.
Okay, and in, in your research of those places, they've, they've had these ordinances in place for a while, I assume. You didn't hear tales of, of significant conflict over, over activities?
No, no, I didn't, but I can't, I can't say that I, that I dug so deep.
Of course, of course, no.
No, to, to find out, you know, I did, I spent a lot of time talking with the folks at the county about the way that they operate there, because they're, I mean, obviously, they're different, but they're the largest jurisdiction here that has significant agriculture. So I asked them quite a bit about it. And they still have, you know, they still require permitting for their produce stands, just like we would. You know, it's not sort of willy-nilly everywhere.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Ms. Sparks?
Thank you. Welcome, Autumn. I hope you're enjoying a very lively meeting tonight. It's nice to meet you. So, I have three questions. First question relates, relates to the number of chickens. There's, I just am wondering, the 12 per acre that we've got proposed on our ordinance, and the 20 per acre that some groups are asking for, just wondering what the basis for those numbers is? How were those, how were those numbers decided, and why, you know, on what basis? And then, second question, when I was looking at cities that had implemented urban agriculture, it was very common, very common for there to be two types of agricultural uses, sort of one that would be called something like a limited agriculture, and one that would be more general or extensive agriculture. And I'm wondering if there was any discussion or, or thought about implementing a limited agriculture use in some of the other zoning areas? And just curious why that did not come as an option? And then, third question is about the times. I do agree with some of the previous comments that, that tying the times to construction might not be the ideal way to go. And I know that we're going to be looking at our noise ordinance sometime soon, and I personally think that some of the times should be adjusted. I know Santa Rosa, for example, doesn't allow leaf blowers before 8:00 a.m. So my question is just, do we, do we even want to include times in this ordinance, or should it just be tied to the noise ordinance? So those are my three questions.
Yeah, so it's a good question about the chickens. So when I looked at our animal keeping, the section related to animal keeping in the code, so it's very interesting that chickens are actually more limited than fowl and poultry of other kinds. So, the 12 per acre actually comes from what is currently allowed among other fowl and poultry. So, right now, as things stand in Katari, you could have 12 ducks per acre, okay, but you can't have that many chickens. So, you know, I use that as kind of the, the benchmark, you know, and just, so looking for some internal consistency within the code as well. And I think the same is true of like quail, pheasants, you know, other, other kinds of, of birds. The 20 per acre is a standard that some folks who are, you know, who are, who are advocating for really strong urban agriculture that would be really viable, they're promoting the idea of going up to 20 hens per acre, but what the staff is proposing is, is 12. And I, I can't speak to the magic number, you know, 20 or something higher, but we have, but we have heard that, obviously, the more chickens you have, the more eggs you can produce, the more you're actually likely to be able to make a living as a food producer. So we thought 12 would give us that internal consistency within our code. So your next question was about the other, the two types of uses, or the two are sort of limited or more extensive farming. And, you know, I think in looking at, I think that's, I think that's a great idea. I think that in looking at Katari's size, and the, the numbers of properties that we're talking about potentially impacted, and the size of them, you know, going to a super-fine grain didn't necessarily make sense. We're not actually even expecting a flood of, of farms to, to move in, and we're not actually aware of, of many people even knocking on the door, asking to start farming in Katari as it is. So, just the idea that complicating the, you know, the ordinance, complicating the code with all these different levels, didn't make sense based on what we had to work with. But that doesn't mean that that's not something we could look at. The times of activity, so the, the way that the noise, the noise section of the, the code works right now is with, except with regard to construction activities, there's not a lot of detail there. And so for that reason, it made sense to us to put those hours limitations into the sections of the code that are specific sections for those land uses. So, just, just because the noise, the noise section of the ordinance is, just doesn't get into that level of detail related to hours, it does relate it to decibels, but otherwise, it doesn't. So that's why we went with, you know, adding these sections specific to the land uses.
Yeah, and I would just add, you know, we were trying to strike a balance between allowing the farming activities, but also respecting the residential neighborhood, and, and just understanding that farms need to do a variety of different things at all different times, but then some folks are going to be living next door in that situation, and we were trying to thread a needle a bit. But we obviously are open to any suggestions, and, and this is just based on the current situation that we had.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sparks, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Thank you, Ms. Bus, thank you, Noah. I have a couple of quick questions. Is there the ability to split this out and look at the Veranda Falletti Ranch rezoning at this point in time? And bring this other issue on the rest of the zoning out for a public workshop?
Um, it may be. I think that might be a question for the, for the attorney, for the city attorney. I do just want to mention one thing related to Falletti Ranch, though, is that in addition to the rezoning, when we look at a number of the activities that have been identified by the community and fall within our agreement with the Ag and Open Space District and with Farmster, there are some activities there that would not be allowed, even if it was rezoned OSR, without some of these other changes that are in the, in the zoning code amendment. So, you know, we could change the zoning, but we might not men, that might... So, you know, we could change the zoning, but we might not men, that might mean that maybe some of those other uses, some of those other activities would not end up being attainable on the site. Um, so, you know, those could come out in the public process, though, if we, you know, look at the zoning code amendment again.
Yeah, and I would just add, I'm sure we could, we could do it, uh, we could parse the two issues and get one of them on a more of a fast track, but the logistics and mechanics would probably need some input from the city attorney. Um, but it's definitely doable.
Uh, thank you, Noah. Um, I, I, I mean, it's possible that tonight you could introduce the an ordinance that just amended the zoning code to, or cha, just to change the zoning for, for the ranch. But uh, I'd have to look at it to see if there's any, uh, how easy that would be. I, I don't know for certain, uh, at the moment, but I'm looking as we speak.
Yeah, and my concern on this was, was due to the um, public input or the lack of public input on something that could affect such a wide swath of the citizenry. Um, my next question is, how many successful community gardens do we have in Katati or have we had?
Um, I'm only aware of one.
Successful?
Successful? Well, that I, I'm sorry, I haven't lived in Katati, I mean, I haven't lived in Katati. I don't live in Katati. I have been in Katati long enough to be able to stay. Although I believe one of the planning commissioners mentioned that she lives next door to one of the community gardens.
That's correct. And that's not a successful community garden. And we also had a community garden on the other side of East Katati at La Salle that was recently cleared because it was not successful. So that is kind of what has led to my questions. Is this something that we could parse out? And particularly deal with the Veranda Falletti Ranch specifically? And then table the rest of this to after your public workshop? And that's, those are my comments for right now.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilmember Moore. All right. Coming back here, let me see. Some of what I wanted to ask has been asked, but I got a few questions. Going to have a lot of comments, but only a few questions. Um, first of all, use permit, uh, somewhat pricey, I guess, at 4K. Is that something the council has discretion on a case-by-case uh, basis to lower if they wish?
No.
No, the, the only way that could be done is if the council set up a dedicated fund to offset those costs. And then, really, you couldn't even do that really for a commercial business. You could only likely do it for a nonprofit and it gets, we would need city attorney input because it, there's a lot of issues.
I wasn't worrying so much about commercial businesses or nonprofits. I was thinking about basically the residents. But uh, okay, just a quick question. I don't see that as a deal breaker. Uh, but in some cases, we always try to be thoughtful in fees impacting and help startups if we can, if it's the appropriate thing to do. So I wanted to ask, and I think after hearing the presentation, this is probably correct, but would it be fair to say that trying to ensure that commercial ag operations in our residential neighborhoods could be profitable was one of the key goals or a goal in the drafting of this ordinance? I, I asked this because beyond the comments, I noticed numerous mentions of viability, uh, particularly in page 111 where it calls out taking the step of increasing the viability of ag operations. So I see that as a recurring theme. So is that something staff was focusing on to a good degree in general?
Uh, this is Noah House. I would absolutely say we were because the general plan directs us to do so through its policies.
Okay. Uh, I don't know if I have that same, have seen the same thing through the general plan, but nevertheless, that, that helps. Um, so next, I wanted to ask, I know that staff has taken input from the Sonoma County Chapter of CAF, uh, the Community Alliance with Family Farmers, as well as the applicant who is interested in somewhat substantial um, commercial farming in one of our residential areas. And the development is purported, and since had several meetings with them, as mentioned in the packet, uh, and took some, but of course not all of their recommendations and requests. I'm curious, what outreach did we make to regular residents or neighbors in these areas? Was any input gathered from them or any noticing done as we might do with new construction in neighborhoods? And I asked this assuming we haven't, but I thought I'd better just in case I missed something, which certainly could be the case.
Well, Mayor Landman, that's a great question. So we, because of this, this ordinance was directed for, by the city council for us to undertake, and we see it as essentially implementing general plan policies. Um, it was not a project-specific uh, view that was taken, like a site-specific view that was taken on this. And because of that, um, we went through the typical process for a citywide ordinance for noticing, which is notice in the newspaper and on the website, but we did not notice any, any individual properties. Um, because it became, it was a struggle to decide where to draw that line. So we, as we know, we have one property that's interested in doing some farming. Uh, and this, this ordinance would obviously benefit their ability to do so because they are in the zoning district that does not allow crop production currently at all. Um, but then, if we were to notice their direct neighbors, then we would, by default, we should notice all direct neighbors of these properties that are up for changes. And then, well, if you're doing that, then, you know, the community gardens are allowed citywide. And so where would you draw the line? So we did not.
I think it's to you, Ms. Bus. We've lost Mr. House again. But I think he had the chance to answer that. If you had something you wanted to add, you're welcome. Uh, I, I'll just say for my part, I again disagree. I don't think this was the direction, at least from my perception, that the council gave. I would lean more to what's the vice mayor said. I feel that the ground kind of shifted and what my expectations were, what, what came to us is somewhat of a 180, but that's to deal with, I guess, in the future. Um, so let me ask next. I think this has been largely answered. I was going to ask what recourse we have? If we allow commercial farm operations in some of these neighbors, neighborhoods, uh, from them using synthetic pesticides or fertilizers? And clearly, we don't have any control over that. And my concern is although I suspect many applicants may not do that simply because of the values they have, I also know that some will to maximize profit. So we don't have the ability to forbid that use and it appears we have no realistic control over application to tech neighbors other than setbacks, which I don't think the wind respects terribly much. Uh, I wanted to ask with this, wouldn't increased commercial ads in these residential neighborhoods then quite possibly lead to further increasing the use of these substances? And I say that because we know that in neighborhoods already, people are using uh, synthetic pesticides and synthetic uh, fertilizers. Uh, and that's a problem. But if we add the ability for more intense agriculture, isn't likely we open the door to increasing that further? My assumption is yes, but I wanted to see if you had anything to comment on that.
I would say that's pretty hard to speculate on. Uh, just knowing that we live in Sonoma County and a number of the small farmers in, in the county are devoted to organic agriculture. Um, it's, it's not, uh, it's not something that I would expect, but it's impossible. It's impossible to speculate. I will say that, um, you know, the one property owner who has approached us, to my knowledge, related to farming on her RVL property where it's not allowed now, is just reserved her, received her CCOF certification. So she's a certified organic farmer. And it is true that organic farmers can still use sprays, you know, but uh, but obviously their practices, you know, are considered to be less harmful to the environment and to, to humans. Uh, you know, and, and the way that things stand right now, there is, there is nothing that allows uh, the city to regulate pesticide herbicide use on any private property, unfortunately.
Yep. No, I share your concern about that. We took care of municipal use several years ago, but this is something we can't deal with. And I share the concern. I've heard from many that this stance opened the door because I, although we agree on that, I don't know if I share your equanimity that people may not go that. I think if you open that door, people will. Um, and we have no way of controlling that. And it goes against the whole concept of potentially being healthier or safer, but that's another discussion. Last thing I wanted to ask, uh, and I think it's largely been answered. I think my colleagues have pretty much laid pointed out how using construction hours, uh, basing the proposed hours, mirroring construction hours really doesn't make a lot of sense. Uh, and I would agree that because these are something that were supposed to be a temporary imposition to allow construction over a short time, not a permanent imposition. Um, so, and I know that also when I look at this, we do, I believe, allow Monday through Friday for construction when construction is necessary from seven to seven. But on Saturday, Sunday and holidays, it can only be approved by the review authority through conditions of approval. And yet this, we're just going right out the gate and saying Saturday, Sunday, holidays, fine too. So I wanted to ask, given these significant differences, again, were these hours proposed to kind of help with that concept of financial viability?
Um, yeah, I would, I would say that that would be the case. Yeah, we're considering, you know, what the reality is for uh, an urban agriculture, what a farmer does, you know? Uh, again, in support of the general plan, which is promoting urban agriculture.
Right. I think the vision we had of urban agriculture, when that was done, was not the vision that staffs brought for you. But again, that's to be, to be determined. And speaking of that, so I've asked my questions. We've all had a round of questions. I know we have members of the public that would like to speak. So what I'd like to do is jump over and open the public hearing. So I'll ask Mr. Patterson if he would open up the public hearing and we'll listen to the public input on this.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Uh, looking to our, our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Joan, go ahead.
Joan, I don't know if you can hear us, but we can't hear you.
Joan, are you able to unmute?
A sec. Hi, can you hear me now? Okay, you can hear me now. So sorry, I'm, I don't do this very often. So I've lived here for 25 years on the west side, which is zoned rural. I've yet to meet anybody in Katati who moved here because they wanted to live in an agricultural zone. Rather, they wanted to live in a small town with charm. Uh, the staff has admitted already that there's not a lot of need for this zoning. And my neighbors and I, with the short notice week, we feel blindsided by this, especially to know that it's really not a lot of need, that it's spurred by one individual who I don't know when they bought their property, but they should have known what it was zoned for. But more importantly, if you look at the general plan, the general plan is not to promote agriculture and farming. It says that it is to promote healthy food and nutritional options for Katati. And that came out of the Sonoma County Healthy and Sustainable Food Action Plan, which was drafted 10 years ago by the county health services in conjunction with the Food System Alliance. So I'd like to know, where is the proof? I, I'd like the council to say, let's, let's shift this discussion. That where is the proof that this ordinance will actually improve nutrition and healthy choices for our, our residents? Not for people around us who are going to come and, and pay uh, $15 for a dozen, a dozen eggs to somebody, but for our residents here. Who's in need of, of, of uh, more healthy options? How many people are there? What makes you think they're going to go out and buy food at a neighborhood stand? The people who tend to do this work two to three jobs often. They barely have time to shop at all. Why wouldn't they just go to Oliver's or go to Safeway, which is in Roanoke Park? But they have other options if they want to have healthy food. This is not Oakland, where in some neighborhoods, there's no supermarkets. So instead of taking this huge risk, why don't we instead build more community gardens? Why don't we subsidize home gardens by distributing seeds and amending soils? Why aren't we offering free classes in how to can and how to preserve? And why don't we just ban candy bars that seem to be ubiquitous at every checkout counter at every store in the area? That would be a lot more practical than rewarding property owners with a federal tax break for placing a vineyard on their property. Because make no mistake, there are many people in Sonoma, and I know some of them who are well-to-do, who have nice-sized properties, and they slap a vineyard on it, or they put up a chicken coop or whatever, and they get themselves a nice tax write-off for it because it's a business quote-unquote that doesn't make money. Um, I say that-
I'll ask you to wrap your thoughts up now. You're a little over time.
Okay, fine. Great. So I'm just going to say that I asked you to vote no on all of this. Thank you.
The Zoom name says J.I. Brill. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to chime in here and uh, speak for agricultural in the city of Katati. Uh, there are many residents in the city of Katati who can't afford the prices of organic produce that are in the grocery stores in the city. Uh, and, and those residents are, you know, those residents live in apartment complexes. Those residents are low-income seniors. Those residents are folks on fixed income want organic food and that need organic food for health. Uh, so I really just want to speak for organ, for organic food in the city of Katati. Second of all, I really want to speak on the use of pesticides too. Um, right now, people in the city that are, people within the city of Katati, I've seen sprayed herbicides, Roundup pesticides all over the land, all over their properties. And it's leaching in the groundwater and poisoning animals and stuff like that. You know, with organic certification, there, you know, those toxic chemicals are not, those toxic chemicals can't even be applied to adjacent properties or adjacent land. And so land use agreements between neighbors is highly encouraged for organic agriculture. Um, and making food and agriculture and it more accessible to the general community in the area is definitely going to improve the quality and nutrition of the overall city of Katati. Because having a, a food source that's local in city limits makes, you know, these pandemic food lines that we all experienced and the shortages of food that we all experienced during the pandemic obsolete if there are farmers in the city that the general public can rely upon for their food source in the event of food shortages. Um, and, and it also can provide jobs to youth in the community who want to learn about agriculture and specifically organic agriculture, agriculture with no pesticides and chemicals. Uh, so yeah, I really just wanted to speak on that and really just push for this because we need, we need food. And specifically, we need organic food. So that is a, that's all I really have to say. I know I have 35 more seconds, but hey, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Merlin Coleman, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Loud and clear.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, yeah, I just, I'm, I'm really thankful that this has been brought to the city council. And I would like you also, um, to urge you to pass it. Um, I know it's complicated and um, we are a small community. Um, I have lived here on the land, um, up on Cypress for uh, my entire life, on and off. My family bought the land in 1970. Um, and so I've seen a lot of change here and I do believe that there is a way of having um, really positive impact on the community agriculturally without pesticides. Um, and I think that's the direction people are going and I think that can create, there can be a community engagement. You know, if you are an organic farm with the neighbors um, educationally. I also want to say that the CCOF certification process is super rigorous and doesn't, doesn't allow any spraying or any, anything. Um, so that's a real positive. Um, my hope is that um, more urban ag can be supported in a positive way so that, so that really people do have access to food. I also want to say that the farm stand aspect of things um, doesn't need to be huge. Um, I don't think that if this was approved, you know, 13, 15, 20 farm stands are going to pop up in, in Katati necessarily. And up in our area here, um, all of the neighbors who I've spoken to have really been waiting and wanting something like this. So I think it's a real positive. So I think it's a real positive change. Um, I also, uh, I agree that there's issues with vineyards, you know, coming in. And I certainly actually don't personally think that's a great idea. There's plenty of them already. I think we need really diversified food sources in terms of vegetables and beans and protein and eggs and things that really, um, can be a local source of nutrition for people. Um, and I agree that it would be a good idea to ban candy bars in stores. Thank you so much. That's all I have to say right now.
Britta Baskerville, please go ahead.
Hi, so I am a resident of Katati. I also am working in the agricultural industry. I drive to Forestville to work on a farm and a, um, educational farm. We teach the next generation of farmers. Um, having been a part of this industry and trying to make a living within it, I am aware of how difficult it is for new farmers to get started. And, um, I, I just want to point out to anybody who is not aware of this, um, the, the idea of like a rich person coming in and building a vineyard on two acres is just like, there's no point in growing vines, growing wine grapes on two acres. Like the, the people that you are imagining are growing on hundreds of acres. We're not talking about large-scale monocultural farms. We're talking about one or two acres in the neighborhood. That is charming. I have lived on farms. They are a lot more peaceful and quiet than in bustling urban areas that I have also lived in. I grew up in Sacramento before all of these urban, um, agricultural changes have occurred. And I am absolutely in support. I think the, the city of Sacramento has changed beautifully because of all of the efforts in connecting people to their food system. That is incredibly important. I was, I grew up completely disconnected to where my food came from and my health suffered because of it. Now I have a child. I want him to be able to walk onto our neighborhood farms and see where his food is coming from. That is an incredibly important part of growing up and being a part of this land. And, um, yeah, so anyway, I, um, I am, I urge the council to please support this. Um, with, um, the regards to the issues of pesticides. I live right now in a townhouse community that the HOA spreads a ground up all over the landscape here against the wishes of many of the residents in this area. And as a renter, there's really nothing I can do about that. So I'm not at all concerned about a small-scale organic vegetable grower that wants to, that wants to grow in this area, like let people make a living, please. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
DJ Ryberg, please go ahead.
Hi, um, my name's DJ Ry. And, um, I actually moved to Katati because I thought it was an agricultural area. I, um, I live on a, in a neighborhood called Windmill Farms Road, uh, or Drive. And, um, I've always lived near, uh, well, I've, I've always tried to surround myself by farms and agriculture. Um, I've, you know, the, the woman earlier was asking what kind of a person is going to be going and stopping by a food stand? I wouldn't. I absolutely love getting to know my farmer. I love knowing where my food comes from. I love helping out on farms and, and it's one of my favorite ways to become involved in a community. There's so much help that people need when they're farming. And it's such a great way to get to know the, the people in your community who care. Um, so I'm, I'm emphatically in support of, of this bill. I would, uh, I'd love to see, you know, farm stands. I've, I've lived near many and they're always so innocuous, you know? When you know about them, they're really cute. They're, they're kind of this, this locals-only secret typically. Um, I know there's many in Petaluma. Um, the, uh, the last place we lived was in Petaluma on, uh, on Live Oak Farm, which was a place that, um, people would come and, um, they had a little honesty box and, and a lot of, um, a lot of produce. And, you know, you just got to know great people as they would come in and out, you know? We lived on the property. We lived right next to the farm stand. If anybody would be negative, negatively impacted, it would be us. But the kinds of people who are attracted to these are usually lovely people. Um, and, you know, I, I actually thought that this was already part of our culture here. I, uh, I would like to see it become part of our culture here. I'm surprised that this neighborhood that I live in, that's based on a farm, doesn't have a farm, a local farm serving it. Um, you know, like it, the, the closest CSA is, um, is in either Petaluma or, uh, Sonoma County. Uh, or not Sonoma County, um, Santa Rosa. Um, and, um, you know, to the, to the gentleman who, um, purchased land and is starting a farm out here, you know? I would just love to support that. I think it's a great idea. And that's pretty much all I got.
All right. Thank you.
Jenny Blaker, please go ahead.
Hello, I hope you can hear me. Um, I, my name's Jenny Blaker. I've lived in Katati for 24 years. And for over 20 years, we've been buying our local fresh seasonal organic vegetables from a CSA in Sebastopol. And I would love to have produce locally grown, um, close to home where I could just walk over and pick it up from a farm stand in Katati. I see this as being about small, local, uh, businesses that this would help support farmers to get going, a kind of incubator businesses that would help provide fresh, nutritious, organic, local seasonal fruit and vegetables so that not all the food everyone eats has traveled for hundreds of miles and been wrapped in plastic, sitting on the shelf for a few days before we buy it. Um, and it would be great education for local children. It's great to help people connect to the land, learn about their food and how it's impacted by the soil, the seasons, the weather, et cetera. Um, and it's a great way to help neighbors get engaged with one another. Um, I would like to see, um, the urban agriculture allowed in more of the zones, including the neighborhood low density at least. Um, and to loosen some of the restrictions, to give the farmers a little bit more freedom to work when they need to work, whether it's early morning or in the evening. Um, reducing setbacks, um, making, I don't imagine this is going to involve big noisy machinery or a lot of, um, you know, Odo, we're not talking about people having a lot of cows or something. It's, um, small scale, mostly fruit and vegetables and, and hens, as I understand it. So, um, I'm all for this and I hope that you will support it and think about, um, the access to local seasonal food for residents and supporting farmers who are trying to get going and make a living from what they're doing. Thank you.
Amy Lyman, please go ahead.
Yes, this is Amy Lyman. Um, I, I hadn't actually anticipated, uh, speaking because I did send in a comment in support of this, but I, as I've been listening, I have, uh, felt compelled to speak. I live on Cypress, uh, in an area where I could actually, um, engage in farming. Uh, I don't, I mean, I do for myself. I don't in a public way. And yet I, my property is smaller than many of the properties in the, um, the next level down that is being considered for this. And I, um, have a, a few other properties around that also are in my, uh, classification. And we smell fertilizer going, I mean, you know, organic fertilizer going on to fields. And there are people around who regularly, uh, share, uh, crops. Um, I find it to be a wonderful way to meet neighbors, to share good food. Um, I, I do have to say, I don't think that the, um, the level that is being considered in this ordinance, I, I don't remember all of the rural residential rural very low density, but that next level down, um, it's not huge properties. It's not large properties. People have homes on those properties. They have driveways. They have other things. And this ordinance includes setbacks, includes requirements, includes restrictions, uh, includes ways for the city to monitor what's happening and includes ways for homeowners, neighbors to say, hey, this is getting out of hand. I, I really have to say that I'm very pleased with the way that people have gone about, uh, dealing with this question. I think, uh, that more urban farming and raising of chickens and selling of herbs and fresh vegetables and eggs, lemons, whatever. Uh, I think it's a wonderful thing. It's a wonderful way for people to get to know their neighborhood, get to know their community and to share the benefits of their land. And I think for some landowners, it could be a wonderful resource for making a bit more money to help them to care for their land. So I am all for this ordinance. I really appreciate that people are thinking about this. Thank you.
Lori Ann Barber, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm Lori Ann Barber. I live in Katati. I am generally in favor of this, uh, change in the general plan or ordinance or whatever it's called. And I do have a few comments. I, um, love having access to local produce, like Jenny Blaker. I'm a CSA member and I get my, that produce from Sebastopol. I used to regularly go to a little farm stand down on Eucalyptus, which is right on the edge of Katati. But I think the farm stand is in the, um, uh, Sonoma County area. It's not going right now, but I, I just really loved going there and seeing what was there and putting money in the little box, weighing out my produce. I, I miss it a lot and I would very much look forward to, uh, having something similar again near me. And, um, you know, I never drove there, I want to say. But I think one of the beauties of having a local farm stand is that neighbors can just walk over there. I sometimes would bike as well. And I'm not saying that other people won't drive, but I don't necessarily think there has to be a lot of driving associated with a local farm stand. So I actually think the farm stands themselves should be by right. I think it sounds like the, it, it would be very expensive to get a, a, a permit to do that for a little farm. So that would be my recommendation on that aspect of it. Um, I, I also think it would be fine, I mean, I support increasing the hens to 20 per acre. It's, doesn't seem like that. I mean, yeah, I think that's a good idea, increasing that. Um, I liked, or I was curious about Laura Sparks' idea about different kind of ag in different zones, um, that it might be possible to do, I know it's probably complicated, but it might be possible to allow something different in the more dense zones. Um, and I know this isn't really possible in the ordinance, but I, I just want to say that I am also specifically supportive of regenerative agriculture and organic agriculture. Um, the regenerative agriculture specifically is, is often no-till and wouldn't involve a lot of machinery, which is actually often harmful to the soil. Um, and again, I realize that that's not actually part of the ordinance, but it is something that I would like to encourage in general for its benefit to the soil and our climate. Um, and the last thing was I was just curious about the setbacks. 25 feet that back seems like depending on the size of the property, that could actually limit a lot of use on that property. Um, but I know my time is up and so I just want to encourage to go forward in some respect with this ordinance and thank you for your consideration.
Raina Yagi, please go ahead.
Hi there. Um, thanks for having me. I'm actually a small-scale farmer, um, over in Sebastopol, but I live in Katati. And I just really wanted to speak to, um, that I think what gets missed a lot in this discussion of urban farming, uh, is sometimes folks not seeing all the diverse things that it can be. I realize that complicates it as well, but I am adamant, these are things we can all get through and discuss as a community. But, um, another point I wanted to make is, is that I can't express to you enough how hard it is. Like I moved to Sonoma County a couple of years ago, chasing terrible increasing rent and wanting to pursue my dream of farming. Like there are people like me. I could count on my toes and, and my fingers. How many really want a chance to tend the land and do it in regenerative ways and give back and be a part of it? I can't tell you how much it's being a part of your community that really lures particularly younger folks to this, um, profession and way of life. And we are constantly and increasingly challenged by incredible housing disparities, rent increases that, um, that keeps it so prohibitive of us even getting land. And I see urban ag as a way that it's providing like innumerable ways and diverse ways to, to farm, to just try. I started in urban farming. I was living down in the East Bay and I was like, I want to do this for real. This is awesome. We're all, or I hope we're all aware of the death of the small-scale farmer and the farmer in general and how much this country, if not every small community, really relies on increasing food and food access for those that even have the privilege of being near good food like we do in Sonoma County. And so, um, I'm a little surprised at some of the public rhetoric about, um, around urban farming and far, and farmers and just the fear of poor neighborly relations. And I just feel compelled to tell you, like, I've worked with so many different urban farms. Some of the experiences include, I, I, these are my literal experiences. I worked on a farm where low-income, where young kids from low-income families go to farm camp. They learn about growing food where the profits from the produce that they sell go straight into future savings account. It's not constant tractor work. It's not, and even if we even have the means to afford a tractor, I can't tell you how that's just another piece. But rarely it's an occurrence as much as you think, especially with increasing no-till regenerative practices. Um, it's as simple as a bunch of neighbors gathering eager to work on a straw mulching project because that's a sustainable, natural way to suppress weeds. It's never excessive herbicide use. In fact, the grand majority of the time, the ethos of urban farmers aligns with ecologically informed practices that challenge the norms of conventional ag. That's why urban ag came out too. I mean, it's to feed your community, but also talk about different ways we actually need to sustain, um, farming in this country. Um, and I worked at Petaluma Bounty Farm. It became a resource in the time of the, of fires and the pandemic, when hunger is only exacerbated. People had immediate safe access to healthy food during fire season. We were able to keep the lights on because we were within city limits. Our, our water could run because our pump could run and we didn't get, get evacuated because we were within safe boundaries, luckily. Um, but we served a purpose we didn't even realize, um, that was so beneficial. And so I, this is, I'm just, I could name more and I'd love to, but, uh, my time is up. But I just want to tell you that there is so much massive potential to urban farming that we haven't realized it. And I don't think unfounded fears should be caused to restrict its potential before we've really given it a chance. Thank you.
Maddie Hirschfield, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
I'll be clear.
Okay. Um, so I also wasn't going to speak because we sent in a letter, but I, I just need to speak. Um, hearing about all this lovely farming stuff, which I don't deny, I, I think it's a great thing. Um, but we're a perfect example of, of the impact. Um, the issue for us is the byright. Um, we're asking the council to require a use permit for these projects. Um, and make it a case-by-case basis because, um, there are impacts. And I think what's lost here is the neighbor. Um, I'm wondering how many people who've spoken in favor have actually been right next to one of these urban farms that, and, and loading and unloading of, uh, of vehicles at 5:00 AM the morning just seems outrageous to me. I just wish it was, I, I love the idea of urban farming. I agree with all the wonderful things that people say that it brings. But please think of the neighbor and, um, it, it, it just needs to be, um, more restrictive and more on a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Dustin Di Matteo, please go ahead.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Dustin.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Dustin Di Matteo. I am the director of Farmster over at the Veronda Fletti Ranch. Uh, we've been out there since, uh, late 2018. And, uh, I just wanted to hop on and, uh, align in a lot of those comments we're hearing earlier in support of this, uh, ordinance. Um, in my experience out there, um, you know, we are more of a no till, more towards the regenerative agriculture side of things. So naturally we don't have much heavy machinery, heavy equipment, um, and catering right downtown of, you know, in the city of Katati. Um, you know, we, we have to be extremely mindful of our neighbors, uh, for the benefit of the good relations, right? They're coming out for programs, they're referring family and friends over to the ranch. So, um, you know, I kind of look at what's going on here in Katati as a, a really unique opportunity to, uh, return a little bit closer back to its roots, uh, in collaborating with Katati Historical Society. I hear about the rich, you know, significant, uh, you know, historical agricultural ties the city had. And, um, you know, it, it, we're so fortunate to be a, a key player in that space along with some of the other farmers out here. Um, you know, I think for some of the abundance we are looking to see with, you know, inflation and, and costs of goods and just in my aim of it, the job training aspects of it, the amount of youth, um, and so, so many age ranges and so many different backgrounds coming out to the ranch and having either their first farm experience, uh, or lending, uh, some of their knowledge, uh, to me. And, you know, I'm over there, uh, managing operations. So, uh, I, I think the more we can, can do, the better. Uh, you know, the, the only consideration or reconsideration where I'd like to see some more data, um, and that the city staff report did a tremendous job, um, throughout the whole presentation. But one of the things I'd like to see more is just around hours and, and what data we're referring to. Uh, I am also one of those for, over the last five years of Farmster running that organization, you know, ha- have always needed to have a full-time job, you know, to cover my, cover my tail, uh, living out here in Sonoma County. You know, it is not cheap. So, um, you know, speaking personally, professionally, uh, you know, I, I would just be curious to look at the data just so maybe I could understand a little bit more. But, um, you know, in favor of, of this, uh, ordinance and this direction and, you know, maybe there is an opportunity to, to gather some more of the neighbor's perspective in this, um, just to have a whole picture. So, uh, thank you all and for all the hard, hard work. Uh, that's all.
Wendy Kropnik, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Wendy Kropnik. And, um, I'm glad that I, that this hearing is still going on. I missed the first part because I was attending the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater, um, meeting. So I didn't get to hear all the comments, but I did get to hear some. And I'd like to respond to some of those and some of the other statements that I heard. Um, uh, food production is a public good and I, um, appreciate the comments that Raina mentioned earlier. The next time we have a local disaster and the local, you know, emergency food suppliers, um, have, are, are serving the food that's grown locally, which has happened in every single one of our disasters since the 2017 farms, it will become more abundantly clear, if it isn't to some folks already, of how important local food really is to our sustenance and perhaps, you know, ability to have food at all during emergencies. As to the point of, um, the farm in question being, um, in agriculture, that farm actually was a farm and was zoned for it. The city changed the zoning regulations and made it more restrictive in spite of what's in the general plan, um, a number of years ago. So actually that particular farm in question or should be farm, would be farm, hope, will be farm again, um, is really looking to go back to the previous land use in that neighborhood where, um, where the owner grew up was small farms and ranches that were legally, um, zoned to do so. Regarding synthetic fertilizers and pesticides, they are very heavily regulated by the state of California. If you use any synthetic pesticides, you have to report them to the ag commissioner, which then goes on record and anybody can look that up in the public records. Whereas in a regular homeowner, as mentioned earlier, can spray Roundup or whatever and nobody's paying attention. Well, they might be, but they can't do anything about it. So actually agriculture is very highly regulated and of course organic even more so. Regarding the noise, I don't think the construction hours are appropriate, but I do think one should look at mowers and weed whackers and leaf blowers and chainsaws, which your neighbors can use, you know, fairly indiscriminately. Um, farming is more like that. Many people only have the early evening, especially in the summertime when it's hot, you know, to work like that. That's a much more appropriate. And any restrictions that Katati has for using that kind of equipment, seems like it should be applicable to that, uh, that, applicable, similarly applicable. Um, also many of the supporters mentioned that they have like next door to farms. I have a small farm stand myself. I am in an ag zone and it's wonderful meeting the neighbors, having them come here to get their food. It really is a great way of improving, um, neighborhood cohesion and food security. Um, and I have a lot more I could say, but I appreciate your time and I really appreciate all of the other supporters' comments.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. We got a lot of good input. So I'm going to bring it back to the council. What I'd like to propose is that we each, again, go in turn, uh, whoever asks first and just share our comments, our thoughts about what we think works, any concerns we might have, uh, with a note that staff can take notes on this because I have a feeling there's an interest in, at absolute minimum, seeing changes at some point. Uh, so if we could do that, I think that would be helpful. Then after that round of comments, we'll see where we're at and maybe that'll give us an idea where we need to proceed if we need to. And I, the first hand I do see is from Councilmember Sparks. So if you are ready, please lead us off. You're muted, I believe.
I do believe Councilmember Moore may have had his hand up first. I would defer him if he wants to go first.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks. Thank you, Mayor Lemon. And, and the reason I was quick to put my hand up is I'm wondering if Mr. Barker had an opportunity to be able to see if we could parse these out.
Uh, I did take a look. I'm not sure it's really in a form tonight that we can do that. Um, we could certainly bring it back at the next meeting and, uh, bring a clean version that could be introduced and then adopted at the following meeting.
Thank you. Okay. With that in mind, um, in this particular format and the way this particular ordinance was written, uh, I have too many questions. I, I don't think it was, um, as inclusive as it could have been for the community. And, um, and the way it's written right now, unless there are significant changes, uh, I would not be in support of this primarily due to the hours, due to the, uh, secondary, um, community gardens, which nobody seems to maintain and the city ends up having to deal with that issue. And then the farm stands, uh, anywhere around the city. So those are my concerns on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay. So I'll go to Councilmember Sparks now.
Thank you so much. I think that there is a huge amount of potential here to make, uh, to, to allow some uses that would have a, a great benefit to our whole community. Um, I didn't hear anyone in the comments objecting to food being grown, right? Nobody's against growing food in our community. What everyone is, uh, worried about are the side effects of that. So I think there is a way for us to work this where we can deal with the side effects. We can prevent those issues that, that, that are going to cause problems for neighbors and still allow the food to be grown and, uh, and sold. So to that end, I, I, I wanted to propose, um, that the, that if we bring this back with some changes, one of the changes I'd like to propose is that we have two categories and I don't think it would be overly complicated. When you look at other, other cities that have done this, it's really not too complicated, but they use one category for limited agriculture and limited agriculture, um, i- is generally defined as, uh, no mechanized, heavy mechanized equipment and, uh, farm stands can be up if they're temporary and only twice a week. And like, sometimes there are square footage limits on that and no more than one acre. And with those restrictions in place, I feel like we could allow that limited agriculture to take place throughout every zoning district. Because if, all the, all the issues we're hearing about that people are concerned about are, um, noise and traffic and, and, uh, issues related to a permanent farm stand. So if we have limited agriculture allowed throughout the zoning districts, it doesn't have noise because there's no heavy equipment. It doesn't have traffic because it's only once a week or if, or twice a week, however often we want to allow the farm stand. That would take care of so many of the issues and allow people throughout small, um, low, low density residential, even medium, I'd say even neighborhood urban, let people in, um, in condo complexes have the opportunity to grow food and share it and sell it to their neighbors. So that, that's one change I would, um, I'd recommend. And then another is that, uh, Susan, my count, my colleague, Councilmember Harvey rightly pointed out that Sacramento's ordinance doesn't allow heavy equipment without a use permit. So, um, I would be in favor of some sort of compromise to consider, uh, that if there was going to be more extensive farming going on, so mechanized equipment, a permanent farm stand, those sorts of things, then we could require a use permit for that, but then allow the more lighter touch farming to go on throughout every zoning district. Um, I am in favor of expanding the number of chickens to 20 per acre. I think it, it would be helpful in allowing people to produce more food that the land could definitely sustain that amount of chickens. Um, and that, that's all I have for now for the first pass through.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to go to, I see Councilmember Ford's hand. Please go ahead, Mr. Ford.
Councilmember Harvey, is, is that all right? You had your hand up first?
Yes, go ahead. That's fine. Yeah, go ahead.
So it, I was kind of saddened by the direction the conversation took. I feel that, um, the, I, I agree somewhat with Mayor Lemon that the, that the ordinance doesn't capture, uh, quite what I envisioned when we, when we asked to, to look at urban, urban ag. And then one way that I, that I feel it, uh, misses the mark is that it, it, uh, basically envisions urban ag as sizable farm. And for instance, one of the pieces that's completely left out as a possibility is the kind of stuff, the kind of, um, really small, no impact uses that Council, uh, Councilmember Sparks mentioned, things like, you know, somebody who's got a half acre lot could, could put on a pretty good show at, at our farmer's market. That's not allowed now. And, and even under this ordinance, that would not be permitted. Um, so I feel that, that some kind of distinction, I feel like we, we got into a worst case scenario, what could go wrong kind of discussion rather than what are the impacts that we need to figure out how to take care of. Um, and I'd like to see another pass of the ordinance that attempts to define, uh, problematic uses and make the, I, I like, I could see it going the direction that Councilmember Sparks said, where we have one category that's, you know, no, no large mechanized equipment other than what's typically used in a, in a home scale garden, um, and, and a size restriction on, on size of ag operation. And that would allow, for instance, the person who's got a 20 by 20 herb garden, that would make a, a beautiful contribution to our, uh, farmer's market, for instance, or a, or a pop-up farm stand with a card table and a chair. So, uh, I'd like to see smaller uses, figure out a way to allow them and, um, more impactful uses, a, a better way to define what those are that require more review, such as a, a use permit for bigger, um, bigger operations. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Vice Mayor Harvey, thank you for waiting.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I agree with the concept of urban agriculture and the importance of locally grown food, which is, I think, how we got here, um, from the general plan. I agree it can be a way for neighbors to come together, to get to know each other and to share food. Um, I support the general plan concept of develop appropriate agriculture in residential, industrial and open space zones. In fact, I encourage the city to look into how this might be incorporated into our community. I'm not convinced that this iteration of the ordinance balances the need for locally produced food with the average citizen that loves the quality of life that they currently enjoy. The original intent of urban agriculture was to promote the growing of food for the community by encouraging neighbors to share with their neighbors, community gardens that have the proper management accountability in place, encouraging cities to look for land the city owns where gardens for the community could be utilized by those that did not have access to land. This ordinance has now turned into a full commercial enterprise with all the aspects of commercial operation with none of the safeguards to protect the average neighbor. With no minor use permit requirements, there is no opportunity for neighbors to know a commercial operation isn't tended and no recourse for them if it impacts their ability to enjoy their property. Some of the speakers said, oh, well, if there's a problem, you know, they can just speak up. No. It means that as stated in this ordinance, it is by right and meaning the right of the person wanting to have the commercial agriculture operation is more important than their neighbor's right to peacefully utilize their property. The commercial operator is under no obligation to correct any issue that may cause a problem with their neighbor. It is not clear that these commercial operations will promote production of, for food for local residents because as a commercial operation, they can sell their product anywhere. And I did not hear many of the speakers say that always a commercial operation will provide food to the community, will make sure that it's locally sourced. In all commercial zones, we are specific about what commercial operations are allowed where. And we're not really doing this here. It's, it's a, a one size, you know, a one size fits all. Um, community gardens are encouraged and welcomed currently with a minor use permit. Again, this protects neighbors from unintended consequences and ensures that they are properly managed. The changes in this ordinance removes all these safeguards and impacts to neighbors. There's nothing a neighbor could do. I would like to remind folks that we had a community garden on East Katati that was not managed and it turned into a nightmare for the neighbors. And it was years before we were able to get it taken care of and cleaned up and bad things happened and there were a lot of complaints from neighbors and a lot of garbage dumping. So ultimately, as was pointed out, the city had to clean this area up and put it back to its original state. So along, um, along the lines of the comment made on the chickens, I don't have an issue with more chickens provided that there is a mechanism if there is a problem. And I say that based upon experience because my neighbors have chickens. I have five fly traps because we have millions of flies. We have had to deal with rodent issues. Um, so there has to be a way to make sure that if there are issues, that those issues can be dealt with. So again, having a buy right that you can have, you know, 20 chickens and not concern yourself with the neighbors isn't, you know, it has to be dealt with. Um, I am, I would like the staff to address the comment that was made about people bringing things to farmers markets. Um, I would like to understand under what circumstances can people or can, or are people not allowed to sell their wares, um, at our farmer's markets? Um, because it was stated that people could produce stuff, but they couldn't bring it there. So I'd like to understand a little bit more of that because I think that that's an ideal way for people to, um, to sell their, their produce. So I, I would like to see this, um, come back. I- I want to see urban agriculture, but I want it to fit within our community. And I want it to have the safeguards that protects everyone. It has to be a balance. So hopefully we can, um I, I agree with council member Sparks. Hopefully um there are issues that we can work through to make it work for everyone. But I think that that we have to have safeguards in place to protect um people from unintended consequences. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. Well, it's my time to make comments. Uh I do have quite a few. I'll appreciate your patience. I will note I'm kind of smiling because as much as we have five completely different individuals here and we've heard four completely different statements, what I'm seeing is a thread that goes through all of them that I can largely agree with much of what's been said. So I think to a degree we're viewing this in not a dissimilar light, which is a good place to be for a council to deal with this. So let me share my thoughts first. And for staff, I know you're going to be trying to take notes. I have a lot of this written down. I've done some hand scribbling on it, but if you need, I can certainly provide this as a document rather than you trying to write this all down. So I'll begin by saying like my colleagues, I'm supportive interests in home gardening agriculture. I don't think residents should be cited for selling a, a few tomatoes or carrots in the driveway and and honestly, I don't think that's the case actually. But what I am concerned about are numerous aspects of this proposed ordinance and the unintended consequence, consequences that could easily occur. And I'm definitely strongly concerned about the interest of the residents in these areas who may feel that this proposed ordinance kind of ignores the fact they live here and should have some vested interests. Um so I'm proceeding tonight with the interests of the people who live here as my primary focus or my priority. I'm working within those bounds and within those bounds, an open discussion to see what we can do to make this work though. Um that is where I'd like to go. I will say I think that the drafting of this ordinance got off on the wrong foot. And I personally believe it proceeded from what I feel is an inappropriate starting point. This ordinance is based on making commercial farming in residential neighborhoods viable. In other words, profitable. Uh with, to my mind, less consideration of the impacts to existing neighbors than I would have expected to have seen. And that's not at all the way I view this or intend to view this. From my perspective, I want to be clear. I think our Ford as a council should be the interest of those who live here, who have invested their lives, whether they're paying mortgages or rent in our residential neighborhoods and have a not unreasonable expectation that unbridled commercial operation wouldn't be imposed on them to support profits for a few. No matter how well meaning of their intentions are, or no matter how much I may like what they have to say, which in fact I kind of do. Uh that's the space I think we should be operating in. So getting down to a little more data. I, you know, I have to say I personally would be comfortable removing restrictions on selling extra backyard growing food in all of our neighborhoods. But as I mentioned, I struggle right now at least with the door that that would open for larger entities who may well engage in full blown commercial farming in residential neighborhoods. That I don't think is what most of us envision for neighborhood farming in the city. And I know it's what we, certainly not what we envisioned for this agenda piece. So I think we can get to something acceptable, but I think this ordinance as written is just too flawed to proceed from. And I'm seeing that my colleagues seem to kind of agree with that, I believe. So here's my specific concerns. Uses. I have concerns about allowing prop production, horticulture, orchard, vineyard, land uses in R V L and R R districts, especially without a use permit. People who live by these sorts of uses will generally tell you frankly, they're awful neighbors. I had a family member that lived by a vineyard for a long time. It was not a wonderful experience. We have a rather well-known person who lives just outside of city limits and has done a lot for this community. Gentleman's been around quite a while and he lives right next to a vineyard. And I've heard him talk many times. But what an unpleasant experience and the impacts that he deals with constantly. Because he doesn't have the protections. He's just across the city limits in the county area where he doesn't have immune protections, zoning protections that we've put in place. I think a use permit protects the interests of neighbors and allow them to get their input to the council. A minor use permit from community development desk, especially after this staff report, I can't see that doing that and I wouldn't be comfortable supporting that, I think, at this point. Uh the hours? Probably the place I have to be the most negative forgiving, but I can't stress enough, I think, how totally inappropriate. I think this is for residential neighborhoods and I'm troubled that we have brought something to council that actually imposed construction level impacts on our neighborhoods and thought that that would be okay. Um this ordinance actually mentions preserving neighborhood character with the proposed hours. And in seeing that, it makes me worry that we aren't understanding the local vowels and character of Catati as well as we should. I, I mean, it was clear to me and I think it's clear to all of the council. Uh produce stands, certainly open to consideration. I, I think at this point at least, I'd like to see maintaining that use permit for the reasons I've mentioned earlier. I don't think a minor use permit, I trust to protect that neighborhood protection and give them the input they deserve. Chickens, gotta say I've always liked chickens. I've always supported our very lenient Catati regulations for chickens. But I do have to say I wouldn't base a decision on this just to provide commercial profitability concerns. That's not the lens I want to work with. Uh so going through the lens of actually just looking at the concerns of neighborhoods, I'm at this point not convinced that I see a need to increase beyond where we are now. Uh could be talked into it and I'm open to the discussion, but I'll just say that twelve chickens per acre on the Coleman property, I think that's about eight acres. Maybe it's ten, but let's just go with eight. That's about ninety-six hands. And I can't see supporting that in a residential neighborhood. Because what's being forgotten by many of the speakers and the staff tonight is while we have some larger properties, particularly in the R V L areas, like the Coleman property, they are bounded to intertwined with and right next to smaller ones. Community gardens, a lot of potential there. I agree with my colleagues that they have not had a good history in Catati. This potentially could be the best place to allow or larger organized farming, I think, by interested neighbors. Uh I think the hours stated, as I said before, I don't think I need to repeat that. Uh they just don't work. But the idea of having it managed, whether it's a nonprofit or a contractor, that does strike me as a good idea to avoid what we've dealt with in the past. The only caveat I'd say is I definitely would want to see and maintain oversight and control through the council, again, for that citizen representation. Uh Floaty Ranch. I do understand the interest in increasing the envelope of allowed uses to help the contractor managing it. I'm generally supportive of the use of a filet for demonstration farm, community garden classes. But I have to remind all of us in the public that we, and when I say that, I meant staff in the council as well as everybody in that neighborhood, sat in our council chambers a few years back and we promised all of us, the neighbors, that this would not become a full commercial farm because of the noise, odor, all the things that emanate from a full commercial farm. And I believe the staff comment at the time might have been because they're bad neighbors. So there's that expectation there. And while I'm open to the discussion, I want to maintain control. I don't want to open that door all the way. I want a lot of control in that and what I see coming back. I know that city manager Omid was there, Vice Mayor Harvey, council member Warren, myself were in the room. So with that, I, I wouldn't support extended hours, roosters, regular use machinery, that sort of thing. And the last thing is I would like to see us maintain some control or certainly not completely opening the door to community events. I, I've not opened the community events throughout the rest of the community. I could see it maybe for Farmster there. But I think we need a tight control in that because we've seen that can develop into a problem in the rest of Sonoma County. And for all the reasons I've said. So I'd like to see, you know, numbers of events allowed appear, reasonable hours, controls on what size it can be that are appropriate for this neighborhood. And if I feel that's workable, I might be talked into it. I think most importantly, what I want to see, and some of my colleagues, I think Vice Mayor Harvey alluded to this, is a nuisance abatement process and one that truly empowers neighbors to effectively deal with problems that will undoubtedly arise at some point like noise, exhaust, odors. That's, I absolutely have to see that if there's going to be any just open hours allowing commercial farming to any degree in residential neighborhoods. Um I have to say in the letter in our packet from the Coleman property supporting this use in our community, it was mentioned that neighbors who walk by or visit have been overwhelmingly in support. And I do not doubt that some are. I heard a couple of them speak. But that doesn't match the lived experience of at least one neighbor who, who lives very close to them, who I did talk to. That person described significant issues to me with all of these. Tractors, noise exhaust, big fertilizer trucks spraying a fertilizer in the field and the tendons smells lingering for days. Um that is what was described to us, but that was what the lived, real lived experience for the person living next to them just at the beginning of this process. Community input, starting to wrap this up. I don't think it needs to be said, but we haven't hit the mark we need to do for this, with this, I think. And I'm going to have to take a little mea culpa in this because, mayor, I should have foreseen this better. I think we would have been better served with a community workshop to make sure this got out. Uh and like most people who are deeply involved with these things, I think I might have and staff might have tend to forget that the people that really need to know about this, the people who live in the neighborhoods, were planning to change their lives and uh are going about their lives and not following this as closely. So that's, that's my apology on that. But I will say in the last twenty-four hours, as people have begun to become aware of what's been proposed, I'm seeing strong and almost uniform resistance and concern from people who actually live in the R R and R V L neighborhoods. I'm not sure that we can wordsmith this ordinance into a form we'd be comfortable with tonight. And I suspect my colleagues don't either. I believe this needs to come back at least one more time. And I would like to see noticing to neighbor affected by this in those communities with clear descriptions of what will be being proposed in the new revision and when we're going to be voting and discussing and having our meeting and how to attend that meeting and participate. So tonight I am voted to support to bring this back with appropriate noticing for affected neighborhoods. And I want to close my comments with just the direct public quotes I have received in the last twelve to fourteen hours on this. And these are just quotes for datum. Some I've chopped out of paragraphs to reduce the time a little. But these are people in both those sides of town who lived in this area. I am against changing zoning standards without complete, complete agreement with those being impacted. The hours are far too early. Some of the potential properties are right next to homes who did not buy thinking they would be near ag of that intensity. These also need a use permit, so you can sign limitations based on the proximity to homes or deny the permit if it's not compatible. Don't change zoning, just issue permits, use permits, which give the city more power to control any future impacts. I am appalled in every way. I am completely opposed to this. I'm totally against this as well. I feel strongly that this thing is written, should not be passed. I have lived here fourteen years and the way this is described doesn't make sense to me. Having residential right next to working ag, machinery, exhaust pesticides and five AM, really? Finally, it would be helpful to let the public know what is going on. A lot of people wouldn't know about this otherwise. I think this definitely needs to be studied a lot more before any decision is made. And lastly, where does one stop with all the negas around this idea? The mind boggles. Um so this is this is our public input too. And these are from people who actually live here and would be impacted by this. So I'm open to direction through the council. I believe I am hearing an emerging consensus that we ask staff to come back perhaps drafting something new with the various concerns and suggestions we've made. Uh I'll, I'll see if anybody's supportive of that idea or, or just open into discussion. I'm seeing a hand from council member Moore, council member Ford and council member Sparks.
I do believe council member Sparks was first on this one.
All you guys keep playing with my order. All right, let's go with council member Sparks.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um to your question, Mayor Landon, I, I do think that I'm in agreement that we should bring this back with a, an updated draft and not try to wordsmith tonight. So we're in agreement about that. Um I disagree a little bit with something that was said about that we've received uniform resistance to this idea from the people who actually live here. We've gotten a lot of very positive, supportive uh comments from folks who do live in rural, more rural areas um tonight and in writing. And those people live here also. So we, I, I, we do need to represent everyone. I agree with that. Um but I, to my mind, it has not been so one-sided. It's, it's been a really vigorous discussion on um with a lot of different angles. Um there was something I meant to bring up in my first round and I just forgot to because I was nervous. So I wanted to say it again. Um the one of the reasons that I think it's important for us to extend agriculture, urban agriculture through all the zones is that it is an equity issue. That if we only allow urban agriculture within our very, very residential, very low and our rural residential zoning areas, then we are only allowing folks who can afford to purchase a fairly large property to participate in this. And I think it's a, a fairness and equity issue that folks who only afford to purchase or live or rent in a smaller area, a smaller unit, um should be able to benefit from this policy as well. So that was just a, a point that I neglected to mention and I, I meant to bring up. And just a, a question of procedure that occurred to me. Um I was, I, I hate to bring this up, but I was um last year at some point, I was warned off pretty strongly by the city manager from reading comments that people have sent to me. So I'm wondering if that, and I've, I've refrained from doing that because of that warning that I received that, you know, that's not our policy. Um so I have a lot of comments that I could read now also, but I refrained from planning to do that because I thought that we don't do that. So um I would just like some clarification about that.
Well, before we move on, we'll ask our city attorney to clarify that. I will point out these are public postings available to anybody on social media. So they're not private things said to me and I have done them without attribution with anybody's names.
Right. I'm not aware of any, of any legal issue with doing so. Uh I don't know what the policy has been in the past and, and I think Damian, you know, mentioned something to the council member about about uh reading comments. Uh so Damian, I, I don't know if you have anything to add on this.
Yeah, the um, the council rules. It's, it's more, I, more specifically about when um, when somebody submits a written comment, it's our practice to just put it, basically attach it to the packet and not read it verbatim. Um not to say that you know, from time to time, um there might be some paraphrasing here and there, but we, we don't um by policy uh read comments received to the council. And all the comments that we did receive for this meeting are um, were attached to the packet as was our practice or as is, as is our practice.
Thank you. I think that clarifies that a little bit and it's, it's helpful to know. I'll just respond briefly since we're having a slight back and forth, which I didn't intend. Uh yeah, no, I actually did count. Um and I am counting just people who live in the R V L and the R R. And I think I was, I said almost uniform. I, I hope I did because that was the intention. Because there were a couple. And I think we got an additional one tonight that does live in that area that was supportive. But for the largest part, um the postings I've seen have not been supportive. And even the ones that were somewhat supportive still raised some concerns, certainly about the hours and other of the aspects that many of us, including some of the ones you brought up, council member Sparks. So I would stand by that. I think what I'm hearing from the people impacted is much different than some of the area, other areas down. And certainly many of the people who were involved in ag and involved in urban agriculture who, who spoke tonight. So I'm not sure if, did you have more you wanted to bring forward this moment, council member Sparks?
No, thank you very much. I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
Perfect. So I believe we were going to go to council member Moore next.
Thank you, Mayor Landon. Obviously, there's some, some concerns with the ordinance as drafted. Uh I would propose that we um bring it back, but prior to bringing it back, I would propose that we have a um community workshop on this and, and really vet this out a little bit more and then bring it back so that people are happy with the decision that we made on this. And um we recognize it for what it is and, and how it fits within the community. So that would be my suggestion on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Landon. Um I agree with your, your conclusion that we need to ask staff to do some more work on this. And I would be, I think I agree with council member And I would be, I think I agree with council member Moore that we need to find some way to, uh, to involve more public input on this. As to kind of whose comments matter, I think that, um, I agree that people directly impacted by changing land uses have a special role to play, but, uh, everybody in the city will be impacted by the availability of local food. And that's, and, and that's not an insignificant concern. So I'm not willing to only count comments from people who live on large parcels. And finally, I wanted to, to say there were several points in, in your comments, Mayor Landman, where you, you essentially claimed to have discerned a consensus among the council. And I just want to make it clear that I don't agree with your dressing down of staff over, over this ordinance. I think this was a very appropriate, um, ordinance to bring forward as a starting point for us. It reflects what other local communities have done without issues. Uh, it does respond quite directly to the general plan. Goals, uh, which include, um, providing economic opportunities for Katari residents. So, um, I think to, to say that staff has misread the community and misread the general plan is, I do not agree with that claim. So I just want to make clear that there is not consensus on that point. Finally, I think, I think there are ways forward here that, uh, that can avoid some of the worst case scenarios that people are envisioning here. And that, including some of the impacts that, that people perhaps are currently experiencing. So I, I think there are ways forward, but, uh, we got to get out of a urban agriculture means a large farm in the middle of the city mindset. Urban agriculture is a much more diverse thing than that. And finally, Vice Mayor Harvey asked staff to clarify this, this point that I, uh, raised, which is that, um, my understanding is that currently, uh, an herb gardener in, in, uh, in a local neighborhood who grows a, you know, quarter acre plot of herbs, which is a lot of herbs, by the way, cannot legally sell them at the farmer's market. And I'd like, uh, to go ahead and ask staff to clarify that.
This is Noah House. I'm going to stay off video because of the connectivity issues I'm having, but that is correct. And that's the, exactly what we were trying to get to with the commercial distinction. As soon as you are selling anything you grow for a profit, you are violating the current allowances of crop production under the current zoning code.
Thank you. So I, so that's one thing I would like the, the redrafting to fix is Sacramento, for instance, has, has fixed that. And says if you, if you grow things, um, as a secondary use on your property, it can be your deck in a condo. It can be a small plot in your backyard that as long as it's small enough. And for instance, farm stands there have to be dismantled when not in use. So they're not even permanent structures. We're talking a table at the roadside, things like that. So I think distinguishing the types of usage and getting away from our worst case scenarios is an important, um, goal for the next round. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. And I'm going to back here and I see a hand from Vice Mayor Hardy.
Yes, thank you. I just thought I'd chime in on, on that. I agree that I think that this, um, needs to go back to staff. I like the idea, um, of getting more input from the community, be it a workshop or whatever. As far as it being consistent with other communities, the examples that were given to us were all larger parcels. So acre parcels, two acre parcels, you know, uh, zoned rural, not residential low density like what we're talking about. So there's a little bit of a disconnect there because they are talking about, um, larger parcels than what we're talking about. So while they may have ordinances, I don't think that they've gone down to this level of zoning, um, on this. I'd be more interested in looking at someone who's gone down to these levels, um, of zoning. I agree with, um, council member Sparks that maybe there's a way we can differentiate these different types, um, so that we can accommodate this. It still disturbs me that it's black and white. You are a commercial or not commercial. There's got to be some way to, um, differentiate as, um, council member Ford pointed, pointed out, the smaller, um, you know, little uh, fruit stand or herb stand or whatever that, that's just, you know, a, a small thing. It, it shouldn't be just either you're a full blown commercial or you, you can't sell things. We, we ought to be able to find a, a way about that. Community gardens, I believe that, um, it would be really wonderful if we could institute some of those, you know, by maybe looking, you know, to do an RFP or something like that to see if we couldn't get a management group or something, um, to do that. They might be able to be allowed in, you know, uh, council member Sparks talked about equity issue. I mean, maybe that's a perfect, perfect opportunity in some of the condo and apartment complexes for them to sponsor a garden, much like, um, Charles Village that has a community garden. In fact, you know, Ben, um, you know, at Frog's, there is a community garden, you know, of sorts there. And you guys have a way, however that is, I'm not sure, a way of managing that and, and bringing that forward, um, for you, your community. So I think there's ways to deal with, um, with the equity issue. And no one is saying that people can't grow these things in whatever size yard they, they have. It comes down to this for sale than your commercial. And as far as equity from providing food for people, I would like to see us supporting, um, as was pointed out, um, by one of the speakers, us providing soil and seeds and, and, you know, some kind of opportunities for classes on how to grow things. I'd like to see us, you know, move in that direction to help, um, folks, you know, that need food. So that's my two cents at this point. Thank you.
All right.
Feel it forward to the coming back.
Yeah, again, a lot of good ideas. Um, so let's see a few things trying to chop down and respond and share thoughts regarding consensus. Yeah, I did hear a number of council members suggested they felt what came before us wasn't what they expected. Uh, and I did hear Mr. Ford, you start your comments by saying you felt, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong later, that the ordinance, what isn't what, you didn't think it was what we had asked for. So I thought we were in general agreement about that. But of course I didn't expect us all to be ever in a hundred percent agreement and that's okay. That's how this works best actually. But I do want to say this was not intended as a, as a dressing down, as you put it. I think those are your words and your description and I'll leave it at that. But I do think two things. I think making a decision to move so strongly to a commercial ag use in residential areas is a decision that certainly has vast political implications and it's certainly one I believe is more in the realm of the council rather than kind of showing up, uh, making that evolution, if you will, without intermediate input with us. Uh, and more importantly, I think that understanding the small town values of Katari is really important for staff. I mean, we've all heard it for years here. We know it from our neighbors. It's the number one thing we've heard for decades walking this town. Doesn't matter if you live in the biggest lots in the RVL area or if you're in L section. If you ask people what they value, they want to keep it a small town. That's generally number one answer. So this is not intended as a dressing down, but it's actually, I think, necessary direction, uh, to support the work we do here. And it's something that's important for, I think, for our staff as we gain new staff as the years pass to understand. So. I like the idea of small urban agriculture that I've heard from several you tonight. That does make sense as well as hearing it from some of our speakers. I certainly support, and I've heard many of the others of you support, strong protections that are going to have to be in place to really prevent the nuisances that will undoubtedly arise. That's going to be crucial, I think, to get at least my support and maybe many of yours. And certainly ours that I think are less overreaching. I think we've all made that clear. But with that, I do think, um, we've given some pretty good direction for staff to work with. I personally agree with council member Moore's suggestion. I recognize it's more work in another meeting, but I think this needs to come back, uh, to a work community workshop first. So staff can present what they have and all the interested parties can be here. And perhaps we can come to something that, uh, we can all live with. That would be what I'd like to see. Uh, but I'll leave that up to the rest of you to decide if you agree with that. So that would be my direction. Um, I think we are just giving direction tonight if we're not going to be moving this ordinance. So, uh, nevertheless, if somebody wants to make a motion for a certain direction, we might as well do that. What is, what is the will of the council?
Mayor, briefly, could I summarize what we've heard so far? It's been a lot of input and I want to make sure that we, what we do bring back is, is as, um, responsive as possible.
I wonder if we might have you, because I know there's a lot there. Send this out through the city manager to each council member. And then if they see something missing, they can let the city manager know that.
If that's the direction of the mayor, absolutely happy to do it.
Thank you. I, I would appreciate that. So we have, I see a hand from council member Moore. And we'll follow with a hand from council member Harvey. Go ahead, council member Moore.
If, if, if it's appropriate, I would make a motion that we, uh, table this and bring this back at a future dates after a public, a workshop type meeting, um, and proceed from there.
All right. So we have a motion. I'm looking to see if there's a second for this.
I would second that motion.
All right. Second from the vice mayor then. And I see a hand up. So let's go to discussion. Um, council member Sparks.
Thank you. I just have a question. If we were to do a public workshop, I wonder if staff could give an estimate of what the timeline would be for that and what the timeline of bringing this back would be.
Good question. Uh, I'll ask staff if we can have some any estimates as what that might look like.
I'm somewhat hesitant to provide a specific date. Um, it seems like we could do that within the next 60 days.
And certainly after adding extra to your workload, I'm not intent rushing because I know this is yet another change to, uh, community development's, uh, work to plan. But I think as long as we notice it well and give everybody a chance to participate and help craft where we're going with this, I think it'll be fine. Anything else for discussion, council?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
I would like to encourage staff to, um, let all of the folks that have spoken, if they have their information and all of the folks that, um, replied, um, emails to us, that they ensure that those people are invited to attend the workshop.
Thank you. I think that's a good idea.
Definitely. And anyone else who you may have contact, any of the council members may have contact information for that they know would be interested in this conversation. Staff would really appreciate, uh, having that forwarded or an introductory email or whatever the council member feels is appropriate for that resident.
Mayor, sorry again, this may be an opportunity for us to also, you know, uh, go beyond and have some kind of publication, you know, some kind of article in the newspaper that, that lets people know that we're working on this. So that it, again, it, it broadens, uh, the ability for people to participate. Cause that's one of the
That's a great idea. And if we don't get something out of tonight's meeting, at least something, I'd be shocked, but I would definitely encourage it because I do think, and I think we can all help. Like I said, I feel some remorse and perhaps not sharing this earlier and more thoroughly with the public. Uh, and it's clear that I think we can all play a part in that and sharing this through the various means we have to, to help with this process. All right. So, so we have a motion. I'm not seeing any more hands for discussion. So I'll ask if we can have a roll call, vote for that, please.
Council member Ford.
Yes.
Council member Moore.
Yes.
Council member Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Well, that concludes this part, but we have a lot more ahead. I wonder, I'm going to look, check in with the council. Are we interested in taking a 10 minute break perhaps where we go to the rest of the meeting? Is that a 15 minute break? I heard council member Sparks.
No, I just said yes enthusiastically.
I was encouraging you, but 10 minutes is fine for me then. All right. Let's adjourn and it is just about 8:50. Let's come back at nine o'clock. All right. I'm seeing all their faces. Welcome back, everybody. So that brings us to our regular agenda. And the first item we have is a action item, our twenty twenty one housing annual production report and informational update. So last for the staff uh presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Council members uh wait for the PowerPoint to come up. Thank you, Kevin, and I'm gonna have you advance the slides. Um, so yeah, as identified, um, this is a presentation of the annual housing report for twenty twenty one. Uh, and we'll just get right into it. The next slide. So just giving some background, um, as everyone here knows, all cities required to have a housing element. It's part of the general plan. It's been required since nineteen eighty. Um, and it's. It's a presentation to the Department of uh Housing and Community Development uh and the council and the community. Um, of the status of these efforts to. Address and implement the housing element, which is done on an eight year cycle as identified in the slide. Um. Uh, the APR or Annual Progress Report is intended to demonstrate um progress towards meeting your regional housing needs assessment of the number of housing units that the um. Uh, has been allocated to Katati as a part of the Association of Bay Area Governments. And then our progress on implementing the programs that we've identified as uh necessary to meet our housing needs. Uh, and as identified um. In multiple presentations, but in late, also later in this one, uh, there's been significant changes to housing element uh law over the recent years. And in the requirements for those annual reports. So folks who have looked at um kind of some of the last years. They've basically, the format has changed almost every year, or the amount of information has changed every year as the state has kind of mandated new things. And we'll get into some of those details. And it's worth noting, uh, we're, we're. Uh, um, working on our current uh update to the housing element as all the council is aware. Uh, and that next cycle will begin in twenty twenty three. So we will be um presenting the draft. Housing elements to the city council and the community for comment likely in June. And we'll go to the next slide. So here's a summary of where we are with our current Rena. So we're in what's called the fifth cycle. So that's the years two thousand fourteen till the end of this year. And table B in the uh, the production report, the APR uh shows that we've. We've built a hundred and thirty six units or at least issued building permits for a hundred and thirty six units. We were allocated a hundred and thirty seven units. So we've almost built uh or uh permitted all of our. Rena for the current cycle. Um, but Rena is also not just the overall unit count, but then also it's broken down by income categories. And the one area, which is always the hardest struggle. Uh, is the very low income category. So we uh are still, according to our arena, we have not constructed twenty four units out of the thirty five. Very low income units that we were allocated. And this is a table B in the attached APR that will be presented to uh HCD. The next slide. So I'm sorry, there's a lot of text here. I'm trying to summarize a lot that's in the report, but um, so this year we issued building permits to construct thirty six new units. Uh, thirty two of them were single family homes and four of them were accessory dwelling units. They were constructed across all affordability levels. Uh, very low income, low and moderate and market rate. Uh, and we do count some ADUs as uh affordable. In the various income categories, as long as we can demonstrate that that's backed up by information. So whether it's a rental listing for an uh ADU. That falls into those income categories or actual a lease or some, some verifiable information that we can get, then that allows us to count those. And this, I wanted to show that that was compared to twenty units in two thousand twenty, which were sixteen single family homes and four ADUs. Uh, none of those single family homes were um deed restricted in twenty twenty. A number of them were in um twenty twenty one because we had. The Jamie Lane project, which were five deed restricted affordable units. Uh, and then also all of the Kessing Ranch units, um, the below market rate units were uh issued this year. So we got credit for both of those. Uh, and then table D of the APR kind of demonstrates the efforts to implement our housing element programs. Um, and so some of these, you know, we, there were some programs requiring us to, directing us to uh increase the amount of information we're sharing through the website and and just in in general. And how we get housing information out. Um, more code enforcement efforts to address substandard housing, those types of things. Uh, continuing to implement our inclusionary housing requirements. Uh. Regional partner coordination. Uh, and I think we were doing a really good job with all of those things. Uh. And then also we've, we've gone beyond that with some of the cottage housing efforts that the council has supported. And then also we were able to get our objective design guidelines in place, which were not a housing element. Program per se, but have been beneficial and and we're responding to some of the state law changes that we've seen. Some of the things we have not done is been able to find some additional funding for affordable housing. Uh, trying to nail down some of the costs and financing concerns that we've seen uh shared with the community for why projects aren't getting built. Uh, but we have prioritized those for, for this fiscal year uh in the um. Some of the uh council strategy sessions that we've had, and and we do plan on bringing that back as another program for uh the next housing element. Uh, and then lastly, we have not yet removed the use permit requirement for multi-family housing in the neighborhood urban zoning district. That is a direction and a program that's in the current, in the current. Uh, housing element, the fifth cycle, but that will be moving through the ordinance process and we should get to the planning commission next uh month. And then uh in council to council uh by May. So we should get that done ahead of the closing of this housing element. And then similarly, um, there were some direction for looking for options to reduce greenhouse gases uh for housing development. Um, I think we've done a good job kind of case by case, requiring solar panels and those types of things, uh EV charging. On new developments, but we haven't created a policy per se, uh but look to see the fossil fuel ban. Uh, moving through the, the ordinance process on a similar timeline. So with the planning commission next month and then to the council and mayor June. For adoption. And then we do anticipate some of the building code updates that are coming at the end of this year. For the next code cycle to incorporate elements of the reach codes, which are uh codes that ban natural gas. So. We are implementing some of those things. Um, and we do look to the uh greenhouse gas inventory and some of the general plan policies as we review projects. But just know that, that we are prioritizing some of those efforts and we likely will continue to do so uh into the next housing element. Uh, and also separately from that, just as a general practice. Next slide. Also, just to summarize, uh, we've essentially built ninety nine percent of our Rena. The very low income category is the only unit, is the only category not completed. Uh, program implementation continues. Uh, we have had limited movement on some of the entitled projects that we were previously anticipating to assist us. So the Katati Villages project out on one sixteen. And the Katati Station project uh uh over in uh Centerra Way. Both of those projects have actually um. Submitted new applications, changing their, their, what was previously approved. And so. Um, we are kind of revisiting those, uh, basically reviewing new projects on those previously entitled sites. So obviously those are not going to contribute to the housing numbers that we have in this cycle. But if those reentitled projects are approved, we would look to those being a good jump start for the next uh housing element cycle, which starts in twenty twenty three. Um, has been kind of the theme in a lot of our housing meetings. There's just. Kind of an unbelievable amount of legislation, legislative changes that have come out of the state. Uh, this is specific to housing elements, the production report itself, even how the city can review. Housing projects. There's a lot of information in the staff report and attached, uh, but the next slide gets into some highlights. So if we go to that. So again, I apologize for the amount of text, but I feel like some of these are important to highlight. And uh, so AB two thousand or AB eight seventy nine, which is actually a two thousand eighteen law. Really laid out a lot of changes in what we do with our reporting. Um, and also with the housing element itself, it requires that we conduct an analysis of governmental and non-governmental constraints. To the um construction maintenance and improvement of housing. Uh, they included the preservation category. So that's uh if there's deed restricted units that are at risk of being um. Lost, then uh, but the city can make efforts to preserve those. Uh, then then we get credit for that in some instances. And the Burbank Windwood project is a good example. The city council uh. Voted to allocate some funding to help Burbank Housing uh acquire that project. It was at risk of losing its affordability within ten years. And the law says it has to be within eight years to count in towards Rena under preservation. But. Um, I just wanted to highlight that because it was a significant effort that the council made to support affordable housing here in Katati. Um, AB twenty three forty five uh allows, sets the standards for cities granting a fifty percent density bonus. Uh, process and then also specifies a parking maximum that can be uh applied to certain projects in certain instances. There's more details on, on that in the staff report. Uh, AB seven twenty five, uh, missing middle housing. Uh, this. Uh, includes some specific requirements for housing opportunity sites related to how you allocate your affordable housing units from your Rena throughout the city. Uh, I'm not concerned with, with Katati um being able to implement this. We've zoned uh a lot of stretches of the community. Uh, for housing types, a variety of housing types, and should be able to comply with this no problem. Uh, but we'll be more, we'll have more specific discussions on that as we get into the housing element programs and policies, which we do anticipate happening in the coming months. Um, SB three thirty, the Housing Crisis Act. This is a pretty broad one. It had a lot of requirements. Uh, but it sets specific processing timelines uh for housing projects, mixed use ratios. Um, and it limits the regulations that cities can apply to objective. Uh, rules on new housing projects. Of course, we have those objective guidelines in place, and so we have some regulations that can address those. One place that we did not talk about objective guidelines is the new law that was adopted this year or sorry, in. I think it did get adopted in January of twenty twenty two, but that's SB nine and SB ten. A lot of folks have been hearing about those. Uh, and that allows ministerial lot splits to occur, uh, not in um areas that are biologically sensitive. So most of Katati is actually not subject to that law. Uh, because of the CTS California Tiger Salamander habitat that we have in the city. But um, the only guidelines that we can apply to those ministerial lot splits are uh objective ones that the city adopts. Uh, we have not adopted any specific to single family homes and single family lot splits. So we will be bringing that back as we can work that into the workload of the department. And then SB ten, um, it's voluntary. So there's no mandate from the state, but it allows cities to upzone. Certain inville site, infill sites and transit areas to allow to ten units. Uh, I'm looking at this. It's similar to what the council already did with the cottage housing allowances. Uh, and again, it's voluntary. So there's no mandates or requirements that are hanging over us, but it is something that's getting a lot of chatter. So the council should be aware of it. The next slide. Um, so just summarizing the anticipated Rena that we're looking to with the next uh housing element, so starting in twenty twenty three. Uh, total of two hundred and thirty four units, so about a hundred. So starting in two thousand twenty-three, total of two hundred and thirty-four units, so about a hundred more units than we were required to build in the last cycle. And then they are allocated across all the income spectrums weighted towards very low income. We anticipate having some additional engagement opportunities with the community in April and May through a variety of mediums. We're going to try to do some coffee meetings, potentially an evening meeting at a restaurant and then Zoom and probably a more surveys opportunities for digital input. So if there's anybody, any ideas out there to broaden that, to reach some specific population stuff is obviously ready and able to listen, and we do have some funding available to assist with those engagement efforts. And then look for the draft twenty twenty-three housing element to be presented to the council after we hear and gather that additional feedback in late May or early June for additional, one more round of input from the council and the commission before it gets the kind of the draft gets finalized and then that's presented for public review and comment likely and later in the summer. So that's kind of the timeline where we're at. And that's the summary of what we are going to be presenting to HCD prior to April first, the due date, and so we can go to the next slide. And it's just recommended that the council review the information, identify any concerns or needed direction to staff and then file the report for future discussion. And that ends my presentation. I'm happy to take any, answer any questions or take any direction based on the information brought.
All right, perfect segue. I'll ask the council if anybody has any questions. I'm looking for hands. No? Let's see, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I wanted to say thanks for that good report and also that it was really helpful to have all the legislative highlights laid out all in one place. I really appreciated that. I just had a quick question, which was earlier on in the process, we had talked about the idea of having sort of two-by-two meetings with the, with you. Do you remember us talking about that two at, two at a time, council members? And is that on the schedule or are we still planning that?
Well, so stat, my recollection was that was floated as an idea and the council indicated that it's, there was so much interest on all council members' part that we were just gonna, rather than do two-by-twos, we're going to present this, all the draft policies to the entire council, along with the commission at joint meetings.
Okay, I think I misunderstood. I thought we were doing all of the above, so I guess we're not doing that anymore. Sorry about that, I misunderstood.
All right, thank you. So the next hands I saw were Councilmember Ford, followed by Vice Mayor Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. So Director Housh, yeah, thanks for the presentation. And like Councilmember Sparks said, that the list of legislative highlights, if you want to call them that, is quite a list. I was curious just about the mechanics of the length of time, you know, that units are preserved as as affordable and how that factors into Rena. So Rena must have a minimum length of time that units have to be restricted in order to count.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, that's correct. So thirty or fifty-five years are the two kind of standards. But I think thirty is the minimum for it to count towards affordable units in Rena.
Okay. And we've, we've developed a mechanism more recently that allows us to claim in perpetuity protection of affordability, which is great. But it sounds like there's this perverse incentive according to Rena. It would, it would actually be wiser of us to preserve them for thirty and then after thirty years come along and give another carrot to tack on another thirty years, because then we would get to count them again. So the system being counting always gets me a bit.
That, I think your observations are correct. It, it's interesting that the, the perpetuity units are for sale units. And the thirty-year or, and, and what I would say is we're actually going to fifty-five years as almost all of our agreements we've signed recently are for for rent units. So there is a little bit of a difference in that. But I do agree, the preservation, the new preservation allowances may, like you say, kind of be a little bit of an odd incentive in some ways, but
Right.
trying to keep what we have already, I think.
Right, okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor Harvey, please go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to, ditto the summary of all of the legislation. It's been really difficult to kind of keep track of all of it and it's coming at us from many different directions. So it was really nice to have it all in one place because, as you point out in the packet, there's a lot of it. So thank you for that.
Of course, it's, it's a struggle for us as well, so.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Thank you, Noah, for that report. And the only question I had is, are you sending in this, this copy of the annual element progress report?
I've actually, as I, there's a couple typos in there and a little, a couple little minor things. So I'm going to go through it once more before we submit it. But if you have any that you want to highlight either now or send me an email, please do.
No, there were just a few and then I can go ahead and just send you an email on those.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you, sir. Some of the staffing changes that we've had at the department put a little bit of a squeeze on how we were able to get this done. But so there are some, it needs a polish before we submit it.
Thank you.
All right, well, I will agree with my colleagues. And this time I think we really do agree. The complexity, the potential conflicts between the absolute near-hit state reporting requirements and the literal avalanche of new legislation, challenging to try and navigate. The only possible good I see for it is I can't think the state, state can really effectively check all that either. At least I hope so, who knows? But hats off to you for dealing with that. That is certainly an issue. I had two questions I wanted to ask, and one came up just through your comments, Mr. Housh. You mentioned something about Tiger Salamander potentially invalidating the use of SB nine in many areas of Catati. Is that a fairly, is that a, are we on a pretty sound basis with this? And I only ask because I'm trying to remember, I believe the city was Woodside, up towards the coast, just south of the airport a little bit. Rather, as I remember, it's been years since I've been there, but a rather tony, nice community that indicated because they have mountain lions coming through there regularly. And because mountain lions are endangered, they were, of course, protected from SB nine. That was a little embarrassing for them, and I think it got chopped down quickly. So it, it is, fill me out just a little more on this because I find it interesting.
Yeah, so, so that, that's a great question. You are absolutely right. They, so what the SB nine law says is, is you're allowed to ministerially, ministerially split your lot subjects to certain criteria and create two new sellable lots with two new sellable units or one new one in theory on the new lot. Unless you're in a biologically sensitive area. And what that really means is an area that's designated by Fish and Wildlife as such that you have to address through SEQA analysis. I think Woodside made a, after the fact, attempt to call themselves bobcat territory or, or puma territory. I can't remember which species it was.
It sounds like a football team, really.
Yeah, exactly. And as you said, they quickly backed off on that approach.
Yeah, okay, well, that, that is potentially, that's good to hear. I, at least I certainly have voiced some concerns about potential impacts from SB nine, although I understand the intentions behind it, so that, that's a benefit. The only other thing I wanted to ask about, and this is just a question of how we phrase it. It's not a, not problematic to me. On page two fifty-nine, when we talk about environmental impacts and how we're going to help resolve them, it mentions something to the degree that we, working with our project applicants, we can champion the use of Sonoma Clean Power and Evergreen. And I think the language was, I'll read it. In addition, the city is a member of Sonoma Clean Power, utilizing their Evergreen, a hundred percent renewable energy power supply. This allows the city to regularly champion the use of Evergreen power to all project applicants and new business owners. Now, I, I think, as you know, I'm not certainly against the concept. But I did ask for us to look at that down the line when the time comes appropriate. But I'm curious, the way I read it there, it sounds like we're in the process of doing it actively. So I wanted to ask, is this something staff has been doing? Or are we more trying to suggest this as a direction we intend to potentially look at using to help solve this issue?
Yeah, I, I actually wrote that and I was more trying to comment on, on how we tend to point that out in our, in our review meetings. And then often electeds or appointed folks point that out more than staff. But I, I do think the language could use a little polish to be more clear as to kind of what benefits we're trying to highlight.
It is true, we certainly have done that, but I just wanted to make, last thing I want to do is create, we've done very well. I look at the work the community develops and in terms of our compliance. We've done great with everything and had Santero Way gone through, we would have been absolutely nailed. And if Santero project can come through in our next Rena cycle, that takes care of our biggest problem area, very low numbers. So I think we're in a good place. And the last thing I'd want to do is get the powers that be upset with this. So I just was wondering, unless I was missing something, then maybe it should be worth it. This is just a direction that we're pursuing and it may well be, I don't, I don't know. But I just wanted to point that out. It's, it's good to hear. I'm certainly happy to bring that up when it's appropriate, but I agree with you. Or the direction at least you suggested that being part of regular review of potential new applicants and business owners is probably the right place to do it.
Yeah, agreed.
Cool. Well, thank you for that. So let's see, I'm going to look one more time. I'm seeing other questions, so we will open this up then to public comment. I will ask if we can see if we have any comments now.
Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. If you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you. All right, so this is an action item, but all we're asked to do is direct staff to submit this and file the information for consideration in future policy. My, I'm seeing consensus, I believe, from the council on that. I'm not seeing anybody saying no or any further hands. So I'll ask staff, do you have enough feedback from the council to go ahead with this?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you, all right. So this brings us to our next item on the regular agenda, and this is item twelve. And, excuse me, this is item thirteen. Actually, this is twelve B, third time's a charm. And this will be a discussion of the format of future city council meetings. So this will be an interesting discussion. I'll ask staff if we can have a presentation on that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So just, I'll just do a verbal presentation tonight. And as, as everybody has noticed tonight, we are doing virtual meetings. We have been for a while. And in fact, it all started in the Wayback Machine, going back to March twenty twenty when COVID first rolled through the United States and the restrictions began. So that's, that was the transition point. The governor, through executive order, allowed elected bodies in very, you know, the various formats, council board supervisors, so on, to, to be able to meet virtually. And with some modified modifications to the normal Brown Act rules governing public meetings. This was later codified under AB three sixty-one. But AB three sixty-one is a bit clunky, but it, but it does require monthly continuations, provided the council can make findings to continue virtual meetings. So back on, in March of two thousand twenty, the council did declare a local emergency due to COVID as well. And that is still in effect. The state has also declared a state of emergency, which still is in effect at this time. And in May of two thousand twenty, when it became clear that this was going to be something with no clear end date, the council did adopt resolution twenty twenty thirty-one, which waived fees and allowed the city manager to authorize temporary street closures and related activities to allow businesses, primarily to allow businesses to shift to outdoor operations, specifically restaurants and some retailers. And then late, and that was originally, I believe, a six-month resolution. So later in that year, September of two thousand twenty, the council adopted resolution twenty twenty fifty-nine, which expanded that a little bit by also tolling existing permits and entitlements and continuing to waive fees for parking street use and delegating permanent authority to the, to the city manager to facilitate, facilitate outdoor retail and dining activities. Basically, everything that was, that was possible under the health order and a lot of things directly responsive to the issues that we were seeing from our, from our local businesses. The council also allocated ninety thousand dollars to assist our, our businesses, which primarily went to purchasing tents and a variety of barrier safety systems, permitting and also the setup and breakdown of the tents. So that was all done for the, and also constructing the platforms for some of our downtown businesses to put the tents on. So this is all done at no charge to the businesses that use them, continuing today. And in that resolution that was adopted back in September of two thousand twenty, there was originally, there was a expiration date or if the emergency order was still in effect, which it still was at that time. It fell back to sort of the secondary provision, which was that the the provisions of that resolution would expire six months or one hundred and eighty calendar days after the city rescinds the, the COVID state of emergency declaration. You know, unless the council subsequently wants to amend that timeframe. But right now it'd be, it'd be six months essentially after the emergency declaration becomes becomes rescinded or gets rescinded. During the pandemic, the city also made numerous upgrades to our AV systems with the expectation that at some point we will, this will all end and we will return to. Public meetings are probably more lightens right now. In Sonoma County, most indoor restrictions, restrictions in most indoor settings are dropped. And the only restrictions really that remain have to do with higher-risk congregate settings, such as public transportation, hospitals, nursing homes, those kind of areas. And as, and from an employer's standpoint, Caloja's ETS standards still applies, but they don't require masking unless the individual's unvaccinated, unvaccinated in, in a public location. So other than that, there's no masking requirements in the current motion standards. So the pandemic has, I think, I think everyone here is well aware that the pandemic is now two years old. According to the, to the World Health Organization, it's been responsible for six million people globally that have lost their lives and a lot of other people that have been infected at some point along the way. Higher-income countries have generally dropped most or all of their restrictions and reopened their countries, and that includes the United States. Most middle and lower-income countries continue to impose various COVID restrictions, primarily due to lower vaccination rates and lower testing and diagnostic capacities in those, in those countries. I will say that even though case rates continue to decline in the United States and then, and sort of broadly speaking, and then in Sonoma County, they continue to decline. There are outbreaks of, I think, basically a second version of Omicron through parts of Europe and also parts of China and Hong Kong. But there's other, you know, the, the cases there seem to, at least in Europe, I should say. And they, they seem to be less severe or asymptomatic primarily because, I think primarily because of the higher rates of vaccination. And also this particular strain doesn't seem to, it seems to be sort of following the viral trajectory of more contagious and less severe, which tends to be the normal life cycle of a virus. In, in some parts of China, they have different, I guess, some subgroups of populations have much lower vaccination rates. And also they use a Chinese variant of the vaccine, which is not effective against Omicron. So they've had some bigger issues, particularly in Hong Kong. So that's, that's where we are today. Some factors to consider just in this conversation is sort of what's happening locally and the, you know, things to think about in, in eventual transition to either hybrid or in-person meetings. One is that unlike a private business, due to the public nature of city meetings, it's unlikely that we could impose vaccination requirements or mask mandates for people coming onto public property. We could potentially reduce seating to, you know, create spacing and do things like that. We could, we could re, you know, recommend masks be required, but actually enforcing something could be problematic from a variety of perspectives. And then as of March fifteenth, when we last checked, the other cities in Sonoma County, just as a point of reference, are kind of across the board in terms of how they're operating right now. Some are, at least as of March fifteenth, are fully virtual. That includes. That includes Petaluma, Sebastopol, Windsor and Yeltsburg. Um, others are in person, um, or hybrid in person in some format. Rona Park, um, in person, Santa Rosa's in person, uh, Cloverdale and Sonoma, but they typically have a hybrid, uh, capability there. Um, is, in addition to changing the meeting format, it would appear to be a good, well, actually before I get into that, one thing just to keep in mind is even if we were to move into an in-person or hybrid, is still highly recommended that the council continue to adopt or continue to adopt AB 361, continuing resolutions just to allow the flexibility to move back into remote if conditions would warrant that. And, um, and, and, and also, um, it's my understanding that once the council stops adopting or continuing to adopt that resolution, you basically fall out of that regime and then you can't really get back into it unless the governor proclaims a new state of emergency or there's another proclaimed, um, state of emergency that would allow you to reinitiate it. Um, and then lastly, just to, um, just to kind of wrap this up, I think the, um, the last thing I just said, I would point out is that this would, if we do move to in-person meetings, it would be a good transition point, I think, to also consider the declaration of local emergency as well as 180 day clock. Because if we're moving to back in-person meetings, it would make sense to, it would make sense to at least consider rescinding the declaration of local emergency as well as initiating conversations with businesses about, um, pulling the tents down at some point, um, at least as it stands now within, within 180 days after that declaration's rescinded. Um, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'm just going to say before I look for questions from my colleagues, what a nice place to be sitting at right now. They were sitting here considering this and noting reduced caseloads everywhere. At least especially compared to where we were sitting one or two years ago. A lot happened. All right. I see hands from Councilmember Ford, Councilmember Sparks and Councilmember Harvey.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so, Mayor, I just had one question, which was, um, if you can describe what you mean by a hybrid meeting, do you mean opportunities for the public to participate virtually or also for council members to participate virtually?
Yeah, sorry. Um, so it could be, um, as long as we continue to adopt the AB 361 resolutions, my understanding that could be either.
Okay.
So that, you know, one or, you know, one or more council members could continue to participate remotely. I think eventually, uh, the idea would be that the hybrid would apply to public participation in, in the future down the road.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Sparks, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Um, Damian, what, uh, what, what is the scare quotes around required mean under Cloverdale?
It means, um, that they, that they say they require it, but nobody's tested it yet. So it's probably not going to be, it, it, if someone tested, it probably would be a problem for them.
Okay.
I like, I learned a new term tonight, scare quotes. Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, two questions. One is that have we checked in with the businesses to see where they feel they're at as far as, um, how comfortable are they moving away from the tents?
At, at the point we have not, I can say is that, um, you know, we've communicated to the businesses that at any time they can ask us to come take the tents down. And, um, and nobody's requested that other than, um, we had one business that asked for the tent, but basically they never used it. They just had us pull it down like a couple of months later, so.
But that's very different than what this suggests, that if we, um, undo this, we're required to take them down uh, within 180 days and without kind of giving the businesses a heads up. I, I'm a little reluctant to, you know, kind of move forward with that and, and not let them know in advance that this could happen.
Sure. I mean, if the council wants to move forward with, um, this and they, they think it would make sense to offer computer the rescension of the emergency declaration, then, um, then we certainly could reach out to all the businesses that have tents and notify them ahead of time. Do you get any feedback from them?
I personally would like to hear, you know, where they feel they're at with their businesses. Some have more capabilities inside than others and, you know, it, it, these tents may be helpful to them um, until we're, you know, uh, kind of past, past this. Um, and then my second question is along the same lines as Councilmember Ford. Help me understand logistically what it looks like for these hybrid meetings. Would some of the council be in the council chambers and they would be a little square on the screen? And then someone who's not there would be a different square? I mean, how, how logistically would that work?
Yeah, well, so one scenario is all the council members come back into the chamber and then they're just all physically there. And the public would be, the squares on this, well, the public could be in the chamber, but they also could be squares on this. And public comment would just have to be managed in a, in a way that, um, I think the typical way to do that would be, we would take public comment from, from audience chamber, people in the chamber and then transition to anyone, you know, that's remotely participating. Um, if, if we had one or more council members that were, um, participating remotely, then, um, I'd imagine it'd be very much, it would be very much, so they would be like a tile essentially, you know, but they would be like a panelist like you see today on the screen. And it would be just almost, it wouldn't be that, that different from, you know, telephonic, other than, you know, you'd be able to see them in.
Okay. Okay. So it would be a little bit different because you'd be able, you'd be able to see them. Right? Okay. All right. Yeah. I just wasn't sure logistically, um, what that looked like and how that, how that looked. Um, and then have we given any consideration? You talked about the spacing for the audience, but what about the spacing for us? Because our seats are pretty close together.
Um, well, that's a consideration because, uh, you really, at the dais there, you really can't make more space.
Right. Your elbow to elbow.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's a consideration to discuss tonight because you would, you, you could voluntarily wear masks, I suppose, or otherwise you're just there at the dais. Now, there's a lot of flexibility beyond that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Let me look one more time, see if I see any more hands. Councilmember Sparks, is your hand back up or was it still up?
It's back up newly. Thank you. I just, uh, about the dais, um, I mean, do we have to sit on the dais? Could we spread our chairs out a little bit more or is there a law that we must sit upon it?
I feel like we were channeling the 1960s if we all sat in a circle in front of the dais. I don't know if that would be an appropriate direction or not, but.
I don't, I don't know. Can the cameras pan out wider than that? I mean, if we kind of move around, then we're not on camera, which defeats the purpose, right?
I certainly hear your concern, Councilmember Sparks. I, you know, I was just thinking as this discussion progressed and just for you to suggest that, you know, when we get to the point we can be in person, I'm looking forward to that, but I prefer to be in person and we can actually do it without being so concerned about being next to each other that we're worrying about wearing masks or something like that. Uh, so, but we're getting into talking about it. Uh, Councilmember Moore, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. No, I was curious what particular timetable we're looking at, if we are considering it.
I believe that's the subject to be determined, uh, tonight and in the future. So that's kind of up to all of us, I believe.
Thank you.
So let's go to public comment quickly and we'll bring it back. I think the council is ready to chew on this one a little bit. So if we could see if we have any comments tonight, please.
Looking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Lori Ann Barber, go ahead.
Thanks, Lori Ann Barber and Katati. Um, I just want to say how much I have appreciated being able to, um, attend remotely. And I understand you're not talking about taking that away, but, um, I, and it's a funny thing to say since I can easily walk to City Hall, but, you know, I have to admit that sometimes I make dinner while I'm listening to the meetings and other things like that. So it is, uh, you know, it's in some ways to me a COVID silver lining that it has been even easier to attend city council meetings to be able to do them on Zoom. And I, the only other thing I, well, I'd say two things. Um, you know, I encourage you all to figure out what makes you feel safe. And as a citizen, um, I, you know, I appreciate your service and I want you to feel safe when you serve the city. And, um, uh, the, the, the last thing I will say, and I don't know what this might look like going forward if there's a hybrid thing, is that, um, I would prefer to have a better view of both the city council members and, uh, attendees. Uh, it's, it's odd to watch a meeting and only see one person speaking. And in fact, I see a very tiny person and very big agenda, and I'm not sure if that part could be adjusted, but it would be nice to be able to see all the city council members. It would be nice to know who else is in the room in terms of, um, the community or the citizenry, uh, and I think other cities do it differently. So anyway, and, but just all thank you so much for your service and glad to have an opportunity to make a quick comment here.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor Harvey, you want to lead our discussion off, please?
Well, I, I just have a question for staff based upon the comment that was just made where they can only see the person that's speaking. Do they not, based upon the kind of Zoom meeting we're utilizing, they don't have the ability to view every, everyone? Or is that a setting that they have to do or is it something to do with the kind of Zoom meeting that, that we've set up? Do you know, Damian?
My, my understanding is that, um, you know, we use, we don't use a meeting format, we use a webinar format. And, um, in the webinar format, it's my understanding that, um, the attendees can't see each, each other.
Right.
That's just a, but it's not a setting, it's just a format of a, of a webinar.
But what she's saying is that not only can they not see the attendees, but she can't see us either other than the person speaking. So.
Yeah, that, that's just, I mean, you can see the other people that have their video turned on, the, the other panelists, I mean, as long as, um, you know, as long as it's set to that view.
It is a view thing.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I get that the, um, attendees where they can't see, but I thought that people had that ability to see all of us utilizing the view, um, up in the right-hand corner of Zoom.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right. See Councilmember Ford?
Thanks. Uh, regarding when to come back to in-person, um, I would be comfortable coming back to the coun, to the council chambers, you know, right now. The, the challenge for me is how quickly numbers come and, you know, rise and fall and predicting two weeks ahead is impossible. So I would be in favor of trying to, trying to come up with some metrics that make sense so that when the agenda is posted on Thursday night, those metrics trigger whether the posting is for in-person or virtual. And, um, I'm not an expert in it, so I, I think the, you know, the current metrics that make most sense have to do with hospitalization rates, not case counts, but, but I think that would require somebody with more expertise than me to, to make a call. It just doesn't make sense for me to, to me for, for the five of us to decide tonight that in two weeks we should be back in person when, you know, there's currently a big surge in Europe and who knows what's going to be going on here in two weeks. So it's just a hard thing to predict and I'd like to think about metrics rather than a yes or no.
Councilmember Sparks.
I agree with that. I would be comfortable attending in-person. I would have, you know, tonight, right now, how things are, I'd be comfortable in-person if I was, if we were wearing masks. Um, but again, it, it, things could change really quickly. So yes, I, I'd be in favor of that same kind of system. Um, let's decide on some metrics and use that to inform each meeting.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Uh, I, I would also have concerns as well as expressed by Councilmember Sparks and Councilmember Ford. Um, I would suggest barring something unforeseen or any significant new variants or spikes uh, likely to, um, hit Sonoma County, um, that we would maybe target May 17th meeting. And that would be, um, I don't know that it would have to declare the non-emergency. Uh, rescind the, what is it? Uh, AB 361. And that would almost give another full year to the merchants that do have those tents and that would give them, you know, potentially up to November, mid-November.
All right. Councilmember Harvey, did you have something you wanted to add extra?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'd just like to follow up on the, on, um, Laura's comment about she would be comfortable if we wear masks. I would like to understand, um, what impact that would have on the recording of things and people's ability to hear us and understand us. Because we all know that, you know, we kind of get muted and, and, um, you know, it's a little bit harder, harder, uh, for people to hear. So if we were to wear masks, I, I'd really like to understand whether, um, we are not making it worse for people um, because they won't be able to understand us.
Well, yeah, I hear some good thoughts. I, I agree with the concern about, at least some of you suggested right now, as things currently stand crossing our fingers at this moment, there'd be some comfort being, be able to sit together in the same room. And I have to admit, I feel the same way and I think of myself as fairly cautious the last few years on this, perhaps extremely cautious. So that says something. Uh, the thought I had looking at this was like you, that things can change. And one other thing that jumped out at me, it mentioned that the gubernatorial state emergency is still in effect, but the thing that was closer to home was that the Sonoma County Health Officers' social distancing recommendations for public meetings are still in effect. And I thought I would use that myself as the linchpin to decide, okay, once that goes away and assuming that there are no changes to the current status, that it is as it is now, or hopefully improving, but essentially not changing, which is within the realm of possibility. I feel pretty safe moving to in-person meetings. I really support the idea of having the, uh, virtual opportunity, both for council members and for members of the public. I think that's, somebody mentioned it was a silver lining and I say it's one of the few, very few good things that might have come from COVID. It's, that is something that's good and I think we should continue to make use of that. But that's just the thought I had. I think that, so what I'd suggest is I'd ask staff to monitor, uh, two things, notification from county health when they pull that and keep an eye on what's going with the status. If the status of that all line up, we start moving towards opening up. And of course, if things change along the way, it's back to plan B. So at any rate, thoughts from the council? I think this is just direction, but, uh, if anybody has anything extra to add or if there's a consensus emerging, let me know. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks, Mayor Lemon. Uh, yeah, I'm, I would be happy with your approach that we, that we follow the, the health officers' recommendations for public meetings. And, um, when we can meet those requirements for public meetings, that, that that be our metric for, for resuming in-person. The, the question of, uh, ending the city's declaration of emergency has gotten mixed into this discussion. And I, I think that discussion is one we shouldn't have until we're comfortable meeting in the chambers together and declaring that that's a regular state of affairs now. So it's clear we shouldn't be having a discussion about ending the city's state of emergency when we're not even sure if we can be in the room together yet.
Yeah, yeah. All right. I would say that I certainly agree with that. You have the best, you know, you called for metrics and I thought, well, that seems like a decent metric we can, it seems. a decent metric we can, it seems that it relates to our location and that could be helpful. As far as other steps, removing the emergency declaration, looking at the question of tents, yeah, I don't think we're at the point to even give direction on that yet. And as far as the tents, I expect an interesting discussion publicly in here at council about what the future might look like and the balance of the tents versus parking and what the future might look like if we do have some sort of outdoor structures. Hopefully they will look less like orange and white plastic pieces. And if that's a direction we go with, but that's to be determined because there's a lot of interesting issues there and not first to delve into tonight. So I'm looking around, I'll see one more time if I have any more comment from any of you. If not, are we agreed to give staff that last direction that Mr. Ford encapsulated?
And Mayor, sorry, real quick to interject here, just to make sure, how I interpreted that was, that when the health officer drops the social distancing recommendations for public meetings, that would be the triggering point, right?
Yes, and we would move forward, two things, two tests. That and the conditions essentially match where we're at now and are not getting worse. That seems to be what I'm hearing from everybody. I'm seeing nods, thumbs up, good. Yeah, I'd like to stay together. I'd like to be at a time when we can do it safely and not have to look like old West robbers. That would be lovely. All right. So I think where we need to be on that, so that takes us next to the city manager's report. Take it away, Mr. Ovid.
All right. Okay, so I talked about this last time, but just a reminder that the, we're doing a prescription drug take-back day. Our police department is the free program on April 30th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Catati Community Center at 216 East School Street. And it's a great place to drop off your old or unused prescription drugs to make sure they're responsibly disposed of. Just a reminder, budget study sessions are coming soon. So we have a general fund study session coming up on April 19th and then another one for enterprise, May 17th. Those can be found on the website, so keep an eye out for those. Just a note about drought. We have had very low amounts of rainfall this year, as everyone knows. And so we're looking at a very, another very dry year and continuing drought conditions. So I would expect that if things continue the way they're going, we're going to be in a mandatory drought regime. So some more fun to look forward to later this spring and early summer. City of Ronard Park, the Roundabout, I think you all know, but the, for anyone that doesn't, the Roundabout has started, has partially reopened there at Commerce. So some lanes of traffic can pass through it at this point. They've made good progress. That's the silver lining to the no rain is that they've made good progress on that construction project and they're quite a bit, quite a bit ahead of schedule. On the West Side Street project, we're also well underway and the streets on the east side, so this is John Roberts, Robin and Condor Port have all been, I think they've all been paved at this point. And I know they're moving, they're on the west side right now, pulverizing the road. So that's all moving quickly and I expect over the next couple of weeks, it'll get all reconstructed and paved. So there's a lot going on there. We're also busily working. So while we're doing the street reconstruction, this is the pavement program we've been talking about for, for many years now, that the council's been pursuing, is that why we're reconstructing the roads. And it's a very expensive process, but while we're trying to bring those roads up to a good condition, we're also continuing to try to maintain the roads that are currently in a good condition so they don't fall into disrepair that we have to catch up on later. And that's a much cheaper regimen for maintenance moving forward once we get to that point. But we are working on design for, it's currently like it's a slurry kind of pavement preservation design for over three miles of streets. That's going to happen later this summer. So look for that in the next couple of months. Wayfinding kiosks are substantially complete, but we still have to install metal roofs and decorative panels, lighting, and then the informational panels, all those should be complete, I think, by early April. And then the final piece is the interpretive panel, which is still pending out there for final approval. And just a couple rec updates. And actually, this is just a report out on this last weekend at Vrona Fletti Ranch, our partner Sandy Loam ran their first youth day there with a visit from Sonoma County's, Sonoma County Library's biblio bus, and you might have seen that on their social media. But we had 26 children there and, and youth and all their accompanying adults who transported them there. So quite a few people. And the vast majority, though, were, you know, were preschool age due to the storytime focus of this day. And next month, we're looking at another youth day with a chicken, chicken petting station. So that'll be next month. And then in May, we're looking, or they're looking to set up an ice cream booth and music for a teen tween focus for that month. So more to come at the ranch. This Saturday, March 26th, we're hosting our community yard sale, the Catati Room behind City Hall from 8:00 a.m. to noon. We're accepting donations Thursday and Friday, the 24th and 25th. So on Thursday, 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., we're accepting donations. And on Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And the proceeds benefit the rec department to continue offering free and lower cost programs and events. The community, anything that's left over that's not bought at the yard sale is donated to the Redwood Gospel Mission. On Sunday, April 10th, we're hosting our annual bunny brunch and egg hunt. And we have two sessions for that. It's a pancake brunch with all the fixings, foot walk with the bunny. And the children, of course, get to go look for eggs and let grass out in Kainer Field. So sign up early if any of you want to enter into that, although I, I will tell you it's age restricted, so you can't compete against the, the young kids for eggs. But it does sell out quick, so sign up fast if you want to do that. Also, we're doing bunny grams again this year, so we're delivering baskets with stuffed eggs and other goodies for households around Catati. And this spring, new to the spring, we're offering adult pickleball classes at Sunflower Park. And so a very reputable source has told me for the last couple of years that pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the country. That's totally unsubstantiated, but that's what I keep on hearing. So anyway, if, if it's any indication, we had two, two pickleball classes. We had one and immediately sold out. We added a second one, that immediately sold out. So now we have a third one. So it does seem to be popular and it's, it's a Sunday class. And actually Saturday is where Sundays are options. And our summer camp registration is open right now. So that's for children ages five to 12, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And there's a lot of other stuff on, on our website, rec programs and other events you always can find there. And one last thing, I'll just let the council know is that the commercial cannabis ordinance to allow cafes and lounges wants a planning commission this week. So it's scheduled to come to council on April 12th. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'm just going to say, I remember a quote from city manager Ovid once saying that pickleball is a thing. It appears that's true. Who knew? I think that's great. So I see a hand from Councilmember Sparks. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Really quick question. I noticed one of the wayfinding signs, just north of Benson, has a lot of, some bird droppings on it already. And are the metal roofs going to help with that? It's just right under a tree, so it's getting.
Yeah, I believe.
Hit pretty bad.
I believe so. I believe it provides a canopy over that wood structure, so it shouldn't hit the wood structure once the roof's on.
Sounds good.
All right. I take one more look. All right, we will see if, let's see here. This is not an action item, so with that, I will move to our next item, which is an action item, item 15. And this is public comment on non-action agenda items. I see we do have a few attendees left, so I'll ask if we can see if anybody wishes to have any public comment on non-action agenda items.
Item 14 still.
Item 14, two, 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 two. City council member report. So you are a glutton for punishment, Mr. Ford. All right. With that, I'll ask if you'd like to start.
I have nothing to report. I just wondered if you could.
Who does have something? Not seeing Councilmember Moore raise a hand. Let's look over here. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, my Waste Management Agency meeting was canceled. But I did tend the Cessing Ranch ribbon cutting, which, Mr. Mayor, you did an excellent job of doing the ribbon cutting, especially with your new scissors. And it was just really a joy to get to meet the families that were moving into those homes and see how proud they were to be joining the neighborhoods and to meet them and their families. So that was a great thing. And just so you know, Damian, down in Arizona, particularly in the retirement areas, everybody plays pickleball. They have leagues of pickleball down there. So just thought you'd like to know that.
It's, yeah, tennis for people with bad knees, I think.
I believe that that to be true and bigger paddles. So yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I was just going to indicate that I believe tomorrow is our changing of the guard with the COC, so I'll be officially sworn in on that. It's already a pretty meeting-intensive committee with a lot going on there, so it'll be pretty interesting. And then I was not able to attend the ribbon cutting for Cessing Ranch. I'm curious, was Mr. Colvin there? No. Oh, then I could have gone, huh? Thank you.
All right. Well, yeah, that was, thank you for bringing that up, Vice Mayor Harvey. I think for all of us attending, that was really a nice ray of sunshine, both literally and figuratively that day. You know, it's a shame the hard question of money makes it so hard to do this because 15% seems like a small amount. And yet, at least the quality of what we're doing there, I think is wonderful. But these are, it's a beautiful neighborhood and these houses fit right in with this neighborhood and we follow the tradition. I think this city's had longer than the state's actually required it of trying to mix all sorts of income levels in all of our neighborhoods to make more of a sense of community. I personally felt for years that really works well. So if there's a way to be able to stretch that and there's some way to increase that funding stack with invisible money from somewhere, that would be a good thing for us to be able to do because the outcome, I think, is a very positive one. One report from me for SETA, because we had an interesting discussion, it kind of outlines some of the challenges we face at SETA, sometimes dealing with issues, but also kind of dealing with SETA's main reason for agreement, which is largely for all the municipalities in the county to work together in an agreed-upon fashion to share revenues. And the benefit is, even if we're not happy with how we share it generally, we can kind of live with it. It's one of those agreements that everybody hates kind of equally, and that's a good thing because there's less fighting over it. And it also means that because we're organized and agreed, we're much more competitive going for grants statewide. So it's been a good thing for us. And so we had a question, there was a staff suggestion that came forward of perhaps creating a new separate funding source to deal with some underdeveloped areas that have problems with, they're in higher traffic areas as well, so they have problems with more accidents. And most of these areas, where is it? It's in the sprint, West County. It's in the springs over by the city of Sonoma. And it's that area between Santa Rose and Ronard Park, fronting those sides of Highway 101. And largely, most of it is in the county unincorporated area. And this sounded to all of us, I think, on the onset, is a very good idea, but the problem was in deeper looking at it, we recognized that creating a new separate funding source that would only go to that and giving it a priority, is a priority, which that was the request, would then come out of the agreed-upon funding we spent about 10, 15 years putting together. So after some discussion, we came to a point of agreeing, we like the concept, we're willing to support these projects, but we want to take them as a board on a one-by-one basis and do it that way rather than just create another carve-out and say, we will always put money into that. So it was a good discussion. I think the outcome works and it shows a willingness that I think we've all pushed there in the last couple of years of trying to support each other with projects and being willing to take a small cut, if necessary, in a local project to help another locality, which is usually makes staff's hair go on end when we talk about it, but actually it's a good thing because there could be a time when we're in the position where we have a project that's not quite making it and if we could get just a little help from our colleagues, ours comes across, or same with the county. So at any rate, that was our meeting and that's my report. I'll look one more time. I'm seeing no more hands. With that, I think at long last, I really am ready to go to item 15. So this time for sure, I'm going to ask for public comments on non-action agenda items, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Looking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Patterson. So this brings us to item 16, and this is information received after the agenda was posted, and I'll check in with the city manager on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing new other than what had been distributed after the agenda was posted earlier.
Right, right. We had quite a few things to do. Okay, so in terms of no rest for the wicked, this brings us to item 17, and that is announcements of closed-session topics, and we're going to be adjourning to closed session. This is one item. It's a conference with unrepresented employees, government code section 54957.6. City designated representative, the city manager or designate, and the employee organization is the unrepresented organization. So I'll check and see, does everybody have the appropriate link? This is a separate, a separate Zoom link. See nodding heads? It should be in your inbox? All right. We'll meet back there and then if there's anything to report out, we will be back here afterwards. So we'll see you in the next link. All right.
All right, I am seeing a quorum here. We are back from closed session and I'm happy to report there's nothing to report out. So that concludes item eighteen and takes us to item nineteen, which is adjourned for this meeting at ten thirty-four. Thank you, everybody. I look forward to seeing you next time. Goodbye.
Bye, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
You're right. Okay, so I can shut this down? Okay, so I don't? Break? Now we don't? Okay. After the fourth, there's another four after the fourth. I wonder if they, it's a certain things are required. Is what they want?
All right.
All right.
This is.
Yeah, I know. Now, do you have to? Be right in the minutes of what people spoke? Oh, you don't? Always. Where you don't put down a list of names or? Can I picture a second?
Yeah.
JP sent me that.
Oh, well, that's easy, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of what, they see the big thing and then the little screen is the, just the person who's talking and he said that you can't, he goes, you can't, there's no options to, uh?
A gallery view or something?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I thought for sure there was.
No.
Because I've been in other meetings, but it's always an option.
Anyway, uh?
I mean, that's how it's been, apparently.
Yeah, yeah. It's first for the service, that's maybe still a big deal.
Yeah, no, it's good to know because I, I thought it was like, well, it just isn't.
I, well, I know.
Yeah, I was like, come on, tell me, just, you know.
The light goes out.
That's what I was thinking. Hover on the right.
And you're only going to size, huh?
What's that?
I assume that you could, JP said you can only resize.
Yeah, and he knows how to do all that stuff, so he's the one that said, yeah. But then, like he was saying, it's like, if you have all the attendees, then you've got, you know, how many up there? It's not like you can just put the five counts in there.
Well, you got a meeting, you did a meeting, then every fourteen people.
It's not gonna, yeah, and then you're not gonna see any of the part on it, so. Yeah.
And you also have attendees randomly in the meeting.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I mean, that, that's, that was a good reason for the webinar is to?
No, I think it's, I think it's good about.
To block them down.
Yeah. Otherwise, it's really annoying. People, oh, my God, I didn't hit a mute.
Yeah, I know. I mean, some people like will just do things on purpose, but other people.
Yeah.
Either way.
All right, see you tomorrow.
All right, all right. Whatever's up to it, yeah.
Light goes out on the cable channel as the ribbon on top. So you can see about six or seven. That what, what's going on here?
What do you see here?
We see the, the agenda up top and then down the bottom is a ribbon of all screens up there. Right along the bottom and it update, it really, it prioritizes people that have a camera.
Yeah.
So they're, they're on there and then if somebody's speaking, it isn't a ribbon. So what's going on over the cable channel? And then a cable channel and if they're watching the screen from the left side.
I mean, why, why would it broadcast that? Why not broadcast through, actually made it resume that?
Well, I think it's because what's broadcasting is, is connected to here and we are controlling what's the view here from this.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I mean, when I, when I meant it's not like broadcasting on, like, you know, on Zoom. Yeah, I would think Zoom, you'd have complete control. Certain panelists. See if there's like some sort of setting or? I think, I mean, people have made very different points, but it was mostly about, I can't see the difference. You know? Everything else working?
Technically, yeah, yeah, I think so.
Did, uh, MinuteTrack log down at all? Did we have any bandwidth issues?
Uh, no.
That you saw?
No. I, I just, I really just wrote down most like the vote results and stuff, so I'll do the minutes.
Okay. Because if you don't pay.
I didn't, I didn't want to mess it up.
You know, there's a lot of other nonprofits. Do we favor one nonprofit over the other? So anyways, a couple of my questions that way. And I do have a question from, for the, or comments about the seven AM to seven PM. And, um, on the, on the weekends, seven to five. I was so privileged to have a community garden right next door to me, um, for the last seventeen years. And, um, good or bad, I have used a lot of the, the, the food from there. And I've also been impacted by people coming very early in the morning with big groups of people. And I couldn't imagine having everybody be there with machinery early in the morning. Noah mentioned that it's the same as construction, but construction stops after the house is built. So, um, I just have an issue with times of seven AM to seven PM in a residential neighborhood of having a farm stand and having, um, machinery being used, and it could be used all day. There's no caveat on this. It just says, those are the hours that you can do machinery in a community garden. So I always say, you know, if you live next door to one and you basically had somebody plowing all day long or using machinery all day long, then it's only your issue, but it's a big issue. So those are my comments and those are my concerns on this.
Uh, so then I have a question for staff, um, based on that comment. Is there an opportunity to adjust some of the times? I also heard something about the, the stands being open until seven o'clock every day and five o'clock on the weekends. And I know sometimes people don't get off of work until five o'clock, so maybe they might want to stop by, starting off at six o'clock, you know, an hour earlier is, is a more feasible time, or are those even opportunities? Um, that's a question that I have based on some of the comments I'm hearing, but I see that also, um, Vice Chair Hancock has his hand up.
Yes, hi. Um, again, I mean, I'm on the engineering side of things and I tend to calibrate. So, you know, even though we have a wide range of times, I, I really just don't think that everybody, there just isn't the space to do that. When somebody's doing something, they're not going to be put in there. So I, I just feel the times are fine at the moment. Um, in putting, um, you know, enabling people to do some work, um, when they need to actually do it. I mean, I know there's people out there who say I love work. I could look at it all day, but I tend to be a hands-on person when I want to do something. And I support other people, particularly for agriculture and being able to get in there, um, it's just, it's not very much. I mean, it's just why are we making it more complicated is what I've got to say about it. So I'm, I'm all for the simpler approach. And, um, as I said, I, you know, I, I, I think we could extend it more rather than, um, restrict it more. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, staff, um, so should we then see if someone wants to make a motion under resolution?
Yeah, just really quickly, um, we have looked it up and we've confirmed, uh, Commissioner Murphy is within five hundred feet of the Filetti Ranch property. So if we could break the motion in half on the text amendments, which are the change of land use tables, as we've been talking about. And then a separate motion and a vote on the MAP amendment, which is to actually rezone the Filetti Ranch property. Uh, that would allow Chair Murphy to vote on one and to abstain from the other.